If everyone up here could please introduce yourselves or residents will know who's some of the people that are working very hard for them.
Thanks, Madam President. I'm Bridget Jordy and the communications man.
Leslie Hervey interim clerk.
Commissioner Lisa Reese.
Good afternoon. I'm Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aluto County Administrator.
Thank you all, and I'm Stephanie Summeraduma, the President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. We will get started because we have quite a few things on our agenda. And first, we always start out with a silent prayer, and after that, if you could stand for a pledge of allegiance, that would be great. So just a few moments for our silent prayer.
Madam President, as we do our silent prayer, can we add Fatima Chavez, who died of an aneurysm. She was a graduate of Northwest High School and a volleyball player at North Carolina A&amp;T, and just recently died because of an aneurysm.
Thank you certainly, all. Thank you. Amen. Thank you. You could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, for liberty, justice, and all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Commissioner Summeraduma?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. I have before me one card. Jeff Capel? You have two minutes.
Thank you. I drove downtown today to express my support for Commissioner Reese's motion to give the homeowners the full property tax rebate that we were promised with the 1996 stadium deal. During the 1996 stadium tax campaign, we were promised that the tax would only last for 20 years, that we would get 30% of the proceeds in the form of the property tax rollback, and that there would be tons and tons of economic development that these stadiums would bring to the region. All of those, of course, have been lies. The tax is still going on and will be indefinitely. The 30% rebate that we were supposed to get, we've not been getting most of the time. And of course, all the economic development that stadiums are supposed to bring never do happen. If you go back 40, about 40 years, every single independent study that has come out has shown that stadiums do not promote net economic development, tax revenues, or more jobs. And yet politicians continue to be fooled by the campaigns. It doesn't take a tremendous amount of intelligence to understand that. We just have to be willing to read all those studies that have come out. So while I think Commissioner Reese's motion should pass today because that does fulfill a promise that was made to the taxpayers, even more important than that is that going forward, we just have to make sure we're not fooled by these arguments again. We know that stadiums do not ever bring the development and all the promises that its backers claim that they will. So let's make sure we're not getting fooled again going forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Marilyn Wall? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move forward to comments and motions. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to also acknowledge Winton Woods High School is going to this, playing in the state championship football tonight for the first time, and want to wish them the best tonight and encourage people they can look at it online. I do have, I guess when we get to the by leaves to deal with the 30%, then I will make my comments then about the tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Treehouse?
Thank you, Madam President. I only have one thing. Yesterday, or rather, last night, there were a lot of folks sworn in throughout the county to various political entities, the councils that they represent. And so I had the pleasure of going out to Montgomery and swearing in the council and the mayor out there. So congratulations to Craig Margolis, who is the new mayor in Montgomery. But Wyoming had a swearing in, Blue Ash had a swearing in, and so I just want to say congratulations to all of those that we will now be partnering with in all these jurisdictions who were all sworn in last night. Jeff Capel being one of them. Thank you.
Congratulations. I just have a few things, just a few activities that I've been involved with. I went to the Cincinnati Business Coalition last Friday. That coalition looks at, it's a state capital task force to look at projects that have been submitted to the legislature, and then they bring it down to this group to make a decision about $20 to $22 million in capital expenditures. So I believe our next meeting is December the 7th, as we evaluate the list that we got to come up with some priorities. I also met with the FC, FC Board of Directors, which is Family Children and Family Children First Council. And that was our last meeting for the year to talk about the distribution of funding for children in our area. And they worked very closely with JFS. And then I attended the Children's Hunger Alliance Food Distribution at Winton Woods Elementary School, brought some little samples back for our commissioners because the Hunger Alliance wants us to know what healthy snacks you're providing to thousands and thousands of children. And then on Saturday, I attended the Greater Cincinnati African American Chamber 25th Anniversary Gala, which was awesome, and they recognized some awesome people. I met with, we had an interview with James Piltcher as it relates to the 30% PTR and where we are and where I am as it relates to that, and I'll be talking more about that also. And then Kim Lauterbach had a webinar with her from Ready Cincinnati to look at their plans and visions for Hamilton County, and then participated in meetings, the last finalists for the JFS Director position. Very interesting, got to meet some good people. And then lastly, met with AFL-CIO with some of their concerns that they have as it relates to labor. So that's all that I have. I will move forward with Jeff Aluto and his report, our administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a couple of by leaves, but really only one because I think I'll defer to the board on the by leaves related to the property tax rebate. So if it's acceptable with you, Madam President, I'll just move on right now to by leave number three and cover that and then refer back to you.
Sure.
Okay. So by leave number three, Commissioners, is a resolution to accept the material terms of the One Ohio Subdivision Settlement pursuant to the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and consistent with the terms of the July 21st National Opioid Settlement Agreement. This item authorizes me to sign as a participant in the national settlement with Jansen Johnson and Johnson as part of the overall national settlement related to opioid distributors. We had previously, as the board is aware, executed an identical agreement for the settlement with McKesson Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBergen. This is all part of the $5 billion national settlement. So ultimately, by signing off on this, the county is agreeing to a settlement amount, which to the county directly will be between $2 and $2.7 million, to the county foundation between $6 and $8, in exchange for releasing Jansen Johnson and Johnson from further claims related to liability for the opioid, as liability for opioid distributors. So again, this is identical to the agreement that we had executed recently related to those other three distributors. The administration recommends approval as it relates to this specific settlement agreement with Jansen Johnson and Johnson.
Thank you so much. I'll open it up for my colleagues. Vice President Reese, any comments? Commissioner Treehouse?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Jeff, for bringing this by leave forward. So as we all know, we have different pots of money that are coming as a result of these settlements from the drug distributors. And we are going to get an allocation directly to the county, but then the other one will go to our foundation. We are our own region here in Hamilton County. And so I have floated some ideas to the other offices. We've been doing some research with other counties to see how they're setting up their foundations. Had a conversation with a group called Benish last week. The AG has hired them to help us try to organize and make sure that, you know, we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. And so hopefully next week, after all the participation of both of you, Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition and these other counties, we'll have just another draft of what that foundation might look like, who the membership will be. And as I said, hopefully that'll go out next week. I'm told we need to get that done by the end of the year. And so I think we're on track for that. So look for that. But this is just an additional allocation into that fund for the purpose of trying to help people, you know, save lives and get people into long-term recovery. So I think it's a good thing, and we'll be ready to move, hopefully, when those dollars actually come down.
Thank you. With no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve by leave three.
Second, Commissioner Summeraduma?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We will go up to by leave two. And by leave two is a resolution authorizing a property tax rebate for calendar year 2022. And I have a resolution in my hand, but before I move to that, I'll open it up for any conversation, our comments. Vice President Reese.
Are you presenting by leave two now, or are you presenting the by leave?
Yeah, by leave two.
Thank you, Madam President. I have been at this county commission. I was elected, and I haven't been here a year. I had a chance to talk to so many people as our 513 relief bus has been out. Over 70 stops, everything from Cleves to Harrison, Ohio, to Avondale, to Bon Hill. Got a chance to see, talk to so many homeowners in Hamilton County that need help. We have funding for rental assistance, and we're doing a lot for renters, and we're doing a good job. We now have some money to help homeowners with utilities. And we're doing a good job, but that just started the end of October. When I arrived here in May, I introduced a motion, May 13th, to be exact, called the Home Retention and Anti-Foreclosure Motion, asking the administration to look at a plan to help give some property tax relief to homeowners. When we received the $158 million that was awarded to us by the federal government for the American Rescue, I worked, I'd gotten word from our auditor, Dusty Rhodes, and worked with him and asked our administration, can we utilize some of those dollars to give the homeowners a break? To this day, I keep asking. They said, we're still waiting to hear back. While that's going on, homeowners continue to struggle within our county. Middle-class people getting crushed that own these homes. And so as we have moved forward, I learned that we had a property tax rate that we had to do by law. I just learned about that. I was giving it a presentation on November 17th. I thought it was going to be a part of the budget, but they said you got to do it before the budget. So it had to be done by today's due date. When it was presented, I had several questions about the administration's recommendation to only do 10%. On the one hand, we had said that we had $91 million, up 8% than we had anticipated, that our reserves were up higher than our normal rate of where we want to keep our reserves at. And so on one hand, it looked like, hey, we've got these dollars. So I began to ask the question of, if we have the money, why can't we help the homeowners and go for the full 30%? Now, I want to be clear, on that day, November 17th, I was for 30%. I had heard it from the homeowners that had been out at the 513 relief bus. I had heard it from voters as I had campaigned throughout this county. And then I saw a budget that was structurally balanced, and with the 30%, it would not threaten the structure. Now, some have given a model, what they call a multi-year model. But I've been at the city on the Finance Committee as the vice chair. I've been at the state on the Finance Committee, and their budgets are different. The county budget, you can't go beyond one year. You only can do one year. Can't do 11 years. You only can do one year. And law says every year, we must set the new rate. So I appreciate the projections way out, but we're living in a society where we don't know what the projections are. We didn't know the pandemic was going to still be here. We didn't know that we're going to get $158 million this year to help. We didn't know that our tax, our tax fund, sales tax fund was going to be up. So we don't know what next year is, but what I do know is that people need help right now. So I have to make a decision on the right now money, not money 11 years from now. So then I said, well, let's go back to what was said to the taxpayers. When got the deal, March 19th, 1996. This is the stadium deal, read through it. Now, everybody in here, we have kept our promise for. We've got the Bengals, I keep hearing, oh, boy, we've got to do this because they got a contract. Other people, oh, we got to do this for the schools. Why? They're in the contract. But then when it comes to the promise to the people, we said, well, we, you know, we got to be in reserve. If we go and give money to the people, we're going to go bankrupt. But we ain't saying we got to go bankrupt if we keep this deal that we have to do. Every time I hear them, they say, we have to do it. It's in the deal. So today, I'm proposing that we keep the deal with the people. The homeowners that were promised 30%. We have the money to do it. We will be able to continue to have a structurally balanced budget. We'll continue to be able to do all the services that we want to do in helping people. But it's time to give the homeowners a break. And so I drafted a resolution. I started on November 17th, and I started looking at other opportunities because I had to scramble. I only had November 17th. You know, we had Thanksgiving. So I had to scramble to try to figure out, because there was no orientation for me, how do we come up, how can we do 30%? So I said, look at 30%, look at 20%, look at 15%, run the numbers. And when I saw we still, 30%, we can still do what we're, say we're going to do and have a structurally balanced budget. Now, then they said Warren County came up, and they said, well, gosh, Warren County did a one-time thing, and they got a property tax holiday. So I sent it to our administration on November 22nd, asking, can we do this? And the response that I got, I sent to November 18th first, then I got a response November 22nd, and the response was, well, I couldn't do Warren County, they said here, because, they said, the recent property tax holiday granted by Warren County was done by working with the County Budget Commission, who consists of the Auditor, Treasurer, and Prosecutor, to reduce millage rates. It is likely too late. I don't know if it's too late. This is November 22nd. I didn't get it to November 17th. It's likely too late for 2021 to do this. The Audit Office is reviewing the timeline. I still ain't hearing anything back. So I'm still looking, trying to figure out a way that we can do this. I didn't even know we had a county budget commission. So I got that. Next year, we'll be ready. We'll be ready next year. So going through all of this, all over the holidays, many of you were eating your turkey and your collard greens and macaroni and cheese, but we were working, trying to figure out how to do this. And so I came back and I said, well, we can't do it that way. So we got to go with the 30%. And so I introduced a resolution, and it's on the calendar as a by leave. And the reason I kept it on there is because we kind of went back and thought, well, you don't have to vote. You don't have, you might have to vote. I wouldn't willing to go if I had to go alone because I got to stand up for the people who couldn't be here to stand up for themselves. And so I did a resolution, and it's on the thing, and I kept it on there because I didn't get, I got something at midnight that said, well, yeah, I think the commission is in, and here is a draft. But the midnight draft and the 1 o'clock draft is two different drafts. So I kept my draft on to make sure we get this done. Because I got so many people calling, saying, it ain't going to happen. It ain't going to happen. It ain't going to happen. So with that, the by leave that's here, I wanted to add some things. And those things, I'm going to tell you that I wanted to add. The reason I wanted to go with the 30% is because COVID pandemic has had a devastating economic impact to the citizens of Hamilton County. I also wanted to go with it because I also chair the COVID-19 Economic Recovery and Relief Task Force, and we've been asking for this, some help for property tax relief. We also wanted this because each year, the commission has to vote on based on the revenue. So don't tell me about down the road, what's happening today. And also because the administration reported that we have $91.1 million in sales tax revenue for 2021, representing an increase of 8% from 2020. And then also because the voters approved a stadium sales tax increase of 1.5% on March 19th. That was what was in my original resolution. I'm going to withdraw my resolution, but have a record. You want a record. I like to present this to be filed on the record. And I do want to say that one issue I do have with this resolution, but I know I've been at the State House where we had to compromise. We have to put things together, and at the last second, I think 12th, about 12 noon, 12:20, property tax rollback by drawing down on the model reserves. However, such levels are not sustainable. Here, we didn't know we was going to have the money we got this year. We don't know what we going to have next year. But in the spirit of wanting to move forward and being also thankful that we're now moving from the administration's recommendation of 10% to 30% this year, I will support this resolution. But I also want to say, it doesn't prohibit me, because I'm going to keep looking, I'm going to keep coming, to seeing what the numbers are next year, and if the numbers are good like they are this year, I'm going to vote next year. But the numbers have to be right. So the numbers are right this year. And I'm glad we're going to go with this 30%. And I'm looking forward to supporting that. But I think it's very important just to note that if we keep a promise for everybody else, we got to try to keep the promise for the taxpayers of Hamilton County. So with that, I'm happy to support this and to also withdraw my draft that's on the calendar and replace it with my, my letter for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you give me the composition of the Economic Relief Task Force? I hear that come up quite a bit, and I didn't know who was in it.
Yes. I was going to ask you all. You were there longer than me. But what I got from Mr. Brogan, he's here, maybe he could talk about it, but it says, the recent property tax is done by the County Budget Commission. It says it's the Auditor, the Treasurer, and the Prosecutor. I don't know if that's what we got here. I had to, this is new for me. There's no orientation. There's no book. I'm learning, but next year I'll know it. So I don't know if Mr. Brogan wants to talk about that.
It's actually staffed, Dan.
Oh, Mr. Brogan, you want to come up and tell them? You the budget director.
I heard two different things. I heard you ask Economic Relief Task Force. Madam Vice President, you answered on the composition of the Budget Commission. So two different things being answered, I think.
Yes, the internal, it is staffed. Our internal staff, we passed it to be an external group to deal with the $158 million. And how can we better get these items to, how we can better get the information to the people? We have passed it on several. We've done several things.
The board passed this?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
All right, Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. So just by way of clarity, I'm not sure which by leave is, because we've got three by leaves.
By leave two.
By leave two. Okay. So related to the property tax rollback, I've been here five years. So we deal with this every year. It's a challenge every year because we want to do as much as we can but still be responsible with the fund, the stadium tax fund. And so every year, we struggle with a promise that was made by others and what we can do to respond to that and provide some relief to the property owners. And so I have made it no secret that my preferred approach is to do a more gradual increase as we go. And we kind of set ourselves up for that last year and a couple of years prior, where we had a fairly low amount going to the property tax relief, knowing that we wanted to increase as much as we could in following years. And so it's a more gradual approach to trying to get to the 30%, acknowledging that we've got some liabilities against this fund, and we do not want to go into the red because if we do that, then we rely on the general fund, and that is not a good alternative, I don't think, for any of us. And so my preferred approach would have been to go higher than what was recommended by the staff, to be fair. I had a different idea about what we could afford, and we had run some of the projections and some of the numbers a couple of years out to see what was sustainable. But obviously, there's a different approach in front of us today. So I will support this approach to provide some relief to the taxpayers and the property owners, knowing that this is not sustainable over a long period of time. And we know that because the projections have been provided to all of us related to the fund. And I think it's important to note, we have liabilities against this fund. We have debt service. We have liabilities with both of the stadiums, which are county assets that we must maintain. We've got some other liabilities against that fund. And so if we were to do the 30%, too often, we will run into the red in the fund. If that weren't the case, I will tell you, we would have done 30% of the past few years, but it's just not sustainable. So this year, it feels different. I know people are struggling. So this year it feels different. Um, I I know people are struggling. Um, it's been an unusual couple of years for all of us. And so again, I'm willing to support this thirty percent this year, um, knowing that in uh years in the near future, we're not likely to be able to sustain that amount. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a a few comments. Uh, what was said earlier, we do review this every year. Um, this is nothing new. Um, there's been much debate and media coverage regarding this issue. Uh, on November the nineteenth, I did an interview and I indicated that the thirty percent is possible, but is it sustainable? So it was never out of my mind that we could consider uh thirty percent. Um, but we need to be very careful. Um, the people that know me that know that when I make a decision, uh, if it affects me, fine, it only impacts a few people. But this decision will affect hundreds of thousands of people and even those that don't have property. Last year, twenty twenty, we gave a five percent PTR. Now in twenty twenty one, we are um asking because of the growth of the sales tax and the revenues, as was said earlier, for thirty percent PTR. And I am in agreement with that. That being said, uh, those uh property owners that were panicking a little bit, remember delay is not denial. Uh, it took time for me to research and to uh look at the the information we received from uh the administration. Let us not forget two things. One, that this rate may not be sustainable. And number two, we are still in the middle of a pandemic and we don't know what else could come our way. So at this point, I am willing to um support the thirty percent PTR. Um, I would ask now for a motion to approve by leave two.
Second.
Again, point of order. I I just, I want to make sure I've got the right resolution in front of me.
Let me, let me, thank you so much. I am actually gonna read the resolution. I think it's important to do that. By leaving number two, authorizing a property tax rebate for calendar year twenty twenty two. Whereas the voters of Hamilton County approved an increase in the county sales tax of one half percent on March nineteenth nineteen ninety six. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners estimate that there will be dedicated sales tax proceeds or reserves available for property tax reductions in calendar year twenty twenty two. And whereas administration stated it is feasible to grant a larger PTR by drawing down on model reserves. However, such levels are not sustainable. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that twenty six million of the proceeds from the dedicated one half percent sales tax is to be used for property tax reduction from the twenty twenty one tax year payable and calendar year twenty twenty two. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the board certify copies of this resolution to Dusty, Dusty Rhodes, County Auditor and Jeff McLean, Tax Commissioner, State of Ohio, adopted at this regular adjourned meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Hamilton County this second day of December twenty twenty one. So at that point, I'd like to make a motion to adopt res- by leave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I just want to let the record reflect that we passed this and certainly, um, I understand as a former legislator, while we have to compromise. I would note that uh I am not convinced that this is not sustainable. I just don't. If this is not sustainable, then some of the other things that we're trying to do, a World Cup and some other things, wouldn't even be a possibility. So we don't know what the future is going to hold. This time we got more. Who knows? Next time we may have more. So I don't want to damper the homeowners there to say that this is not sustainable. We don't know. We will reexamine it next year and make a a an informed decision like we did this year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think you've made that very clear and I think the homeowners will be excited about the thirty percent. We'll move forward with our regular agenda. Um, our engineer. Mr. Beck.
Madam President, I, the presentation.
Uh, yes, uh, that's by leave.
To accept for the record.
Can I make the motion from the chair? Okay, okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, would you like to do item four? Okay. Um, I'd like to make a a motion to remove by leave one from the agenda.
I thought you said both of.
You got. Okay. Um, yeah, yeah, okay. I'm looking at my scribble here. Um, I'd like to make make a motion to remove by leave one and four from the agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make the motion, Madam President, uh, to formally uh enter for the record uh, a statement.
Okay.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Madam President, I was just going to, and you probably are aware, but uh we did have a a public hearing scheduled for one fifteen. We probably can get through the regular agenda fairly quickly, but just wanted to make sure that that was noted.
Yeah, I would like to go to the public hearing because we have one young lady who's waiting. I don't know. I'm not sure which public hearing she's waiting for. Um, okay, okay. So uh, let's move to our public hearings. The public hearing as we have on the agenda. Okay, okay, is to consider the required updates to the Hamilton County flood damage prevention regulations.
I believe uh Mr. Greg Smory is here to present this to the board today.
Yes, thank you Administrator and and Commissioners. Um, this is the second uh of two public hearings required under ORC to advertise uh for the flood damage prevention regulations based based on the National Flood Insurance Program and FEMA's requirements to do so uh for future adoption. Um, to date, we have no um inquiries or comments from the public homeowners associations or any developers regarding any of the uh updates to the regulations. And basically our next step is um to set forth a resolution, uh, which we have already have drafted to vote on, for you to vote on and adopt the regulations at the next commissioners meeting in two weeks. I think it's December sixteenth. So that's where we are currently.
So there's only one hearing required?
Two. We we heard the first one was two weeks ago and this is the second.
Did you present at that time?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay. Very good. All right, is that it?
That's all.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll put it on our agenda, upcoming agenda.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um.
Madam President, you want to make a motion to close the?
I was getting ready.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I breathe? Can I breathe? But thank you. I appreciate all the help on that end. I, well, both ends, but, okay. What I really want to do is like throw this out in the ground. But anyway, okay. Okay, I make a motion to close the uh public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Thank you so much. So now we have another hearing to consider the twenty twenty two Hamilton County budget.
There we go. So.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam President.
Uh huh.
You you.
These glasses are soggy. Um, yeah, for MSD.
Uh huh.
No, it's not. It's not next.
On the latest agenda yet.
And I think MSD will take a while. Um, would Ms. Wall, Ms. Wall? Would you like to make your comment before their presentation or after? Okay, all right. So we'll move forward with our next item on agenda, which is the Hamilton County budget.
Thank, thank you, Madam President. And so we've given this presentation several times uh at at different uh hearings uh in out in Silverton and Forest Park. So um, but for the for the benefit of those who may be watching at home, we'll walk through it uh again, although I'll try to be be brief. Um, Bridget, if you'd like to hit the first slide, please. So uh, this is a presentation uh regarding the county all funds budget. Uh, the all funds budget includes both the general uh, the general fund of the county, which is the general operating fund of the county, um, which is recommended at three hundred and three, three hundred and thirteen point four million. And then all funds budget uh, which is uh recommended at one point one billion, which includes the general fund plus uh multiple other uh restricted funds of the county. Uh, Bridget, and I'm going to now turn it over to Budget Director and Assistant uh County Administrator Brugan to walk through some of the nuts and bolts specifics of the numbers in the budget. Uh, and then I'll I'll walk through some of the um higher level programs and and uh policy items included in the budget. John?
The next slide shows um the the all funds budget from the perspective of large bins. So you see the the general fund is the largest piece there, um, as well as some of the other um operational or programmatic pieces. Job and Family Services being um second and going down there through stadiums and parking. Um, developmental disability services through some of the levy services, um, court services, criminal justice services, all the way down to the smallest piece reflected here, which is the levy that supports the zoo and botanical gardens. Um, in the general fund by itself, um, we'd just like to point out, these are the revenue sources, the largest one, over forty percent is sales tax. Um, where we are expecting, uh, we saw very strong growth in twenty twenty one, but we're expecting it to probably slow down a bit twenty twenty two relative to twenty twenty one. Property taxes should remain relatively stable. Um, intergovernmental revenue will reflect um an increase in state reimbursements for our public defender's office. Um, real estate fees, we we're assuming the market will slow there a bit from where we have been um for the last year. Um, court fees and fines, we have not seen particular pickup from the um in 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 those amounts. So we're being pretty cautious about those. Um, and we're projecting falling interest um and earnings, earnings and interest rates. Um, but we follow the treasurer's estimates there and it sounds like we might have some positive news coming with rate increases into twenty twenty two. Um, looking at expenses, um, we just pointed out that criminal justice services are about seventy five percent of the county's general fund. Um, and personnel makes up almost seventy percent of the expenses in the general fund budget. Um, we're in unusual situation for twenty twenty two in that we're actually seeing a small drop in healthcare costs related to um to employee healthcare benefits. Um, and we have an intentional investment in capital equipment and repairs um in the twenty twenty two recommended budget, which Jeff will speak to a bit more later. And then we have a a slide that speaks to our fund reserve levels, um, which we're projecting in the twenty percent range, which is a a little bit, um, a little bigger than what is recommended by our governor, government finance officers association. Um, you want to have at least two months of cash on hand to address um moving economy and and revenue collections and things like that. And we're in good stead there.
John, and just walking through the rest of the presentation, so the the uh policy goals of the of the of the budget as submitted related to financial stabilization, COVID nineteen programming, public safety, economic and community development, supporting vulnerable populations, strengthening management, management systems, inclusion and equity, addressing capital needs and supporting human capital needs. Bridget, uh, so just walking through um these briefly, uh, for public safety, uh, for those watching at home, the budget supports the operations of the county sheriff, the nine one one center, uh, all the different courts, uh, the coroner and crime lab and prosecutor. Some examples, uh initiatives included in the budget include uh the county's uh uh proactive effort to continue to divert uh individuals around the justice system. For example, our uh law enforcement assisted diversion program whereby uh officers are empowered with the ability to direct people uh directly into treatment as opposed to coming directly through the justice center. Um, uh, continued investment in electronic monitoring to make better use of uh the Hamilton County Justice Center space. Uh, a peace officer academy that the sheriff was here several weeks ago uh to report on related uh to ways to uh attract and retain uh sheriff deputies, especially those corrections officers within the justice center. And it retains the five dollar detail rate for nine one one to make sure that we are charging our uh our local partners as low a fee as poss- as we possibly can. Uh, for community and economic development, the budget supports all of our economic development partners. Uh, it supports uh the operations of the Hamilton County Development Company, the Port Authority, uh Ready and OKI, as well as various economic development programming uh that uh Mr. Mark Von Allman was here several weeks ago talking to the board uh about. Uh, for example, our community revitalization grants, community impact programs, small, a a new small business office created uh within HCDC and our site readiness programming. Uh, for vulnerable populations, the budget supports uh all the uh activities and operations of job and family services. Um, Amy Story was here uh several weeks ago to talk about those operations. Veteran services, our levy work plans. We heard a presentation from a a senior policy manager, Lisa Webb, uh, on our levy work next year, as well as ARPA plan implementation. So again, as I said, all the activities of JFS, children's services, kinship programming, public assistance, cash assistance, food assistance, adult protection, all included within the all funds budget, uh, our five one three relief operations. Uh, the TLRC reviews of senior services, mental health and indigenous care will occur next year, as well as the creation of a youth office within JFS. Bridget? Uh, supporting management systems. Uh, so improve, the budget supports the improvements and efficiencies in our general government operations um and financial planning uh for big uh system improvements. Uh, it includes uh the uh, the addition of a government affairs coordinator to help us coordinate uh the various interactions between our state and federal partners, as well as planning uh for the financing of major systems like our jail management system, finance system, recorder system, purchasing system, and coroner lab system. Uh, capital improvements, um, uh, Mr. Brugan touched on uh this for the county. We have over three hundred million dollars of deferred capital maintenance uh left over from a time period when the county uh just had no ability to invest whatsoever uh in in repair and improvement to our buildings uh and our facilities. Uh, so the budget improve uh includes the ability to make progress here. Um, some examples include uh the consolidation of our nine one one EMA facilities, uh, the bank slot twenty eight, Black Music Walk of Fame edition, uh, the satellite office development, which uh we are looking to uh fund out of our ARPA funding, Finley Market Parking Facility, and uh the ability to dress to address three million dollars in deferred capital maintenance. Uh, and inclusion and equity, uh, our budget supports funding for the Department of Economic Inclusion and Equity, as well as various community engagement efforts. For instance, the continuation of our economic disparity study, uh, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar earmark for disparity study initiatives and additional staff for inclusion compliance work. Bridget? And finally, uh, and I should note that related to uh capital and human capital, uh, both Mr. Ralph Lenny, our facilities director, and Frank Spataro, our HR director, uh, will be here next week to talk about those uh very significant portions of our general fund budget. Um, but the budget does support for all the funding for compensation benefits, uh, the attraction and retention of our workforce. Uh, the general fund, um, employees in our county budget total two thousand four hundred and forty six FTEs. All employees throughout all departments and all restricted funds, four thousand six hundred and sixty nine employees. Uh, the budget includes a three percent wage adjustment for non bargaining staff, market compensation adjustments for Board of County Commissioner department staff, uh, staff development training uh through continuation of our NACO training, uh, as well as institute, reinstitution of our tuition reimbursement program. Bridget? Uh, we always uh hedge risks when we're talking about any budget. Uh, ones that we're keeping track of include slowdown in sales tax growth, uh, financial downturns, uh, inflation, which will drive up the cost of of goods and services, uh, as well as departmental budget non compliance, given uh the various strains and stresses that different elected offices have from a programmatic perspective. Bridget? And this wraps it up. This is actually the third public hearing. So as we look at at this, uh, we held a hearing out on November tenth in Silverton, November seventeenth in Forest Park. Uh, today is the final uh public hearing. Uh, I believe, Madam President, you had asked procedurally for um uh commissioner uh comments and suggested modifications in addition, subtractions, et cetera, to the budget. Uh, by December seventh, the administration will take those documents, um, refine them into uh a larger document that will go back to the board recommending a final budget for enactment on December fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I will open it up for any comments. Um, Vice President Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, we we have, and thank you to our administration for putting forward a um a budget. I will say this budget for me is, I've done a lot of budgets uh at the city and the state level and it's a lot different because you don't have the line items. So I do want to thank um Mr. Brugan. We've had uh three hour meetings and four hour meetings. Because for me, I want to know the structure, how it's put together. I want to know the line items. And so when we look at our. And so when we look at our, the way we have the budget presented, it's charts and buckets. But then you got to get in the buckets. I want to know what's in the buckets. And I kind of teased, I said, man, it's kind of like an abracadabra. Is the ball over here? Is it over there? Are we broke? Or we got money? But you helped me kind of understand it, understanding the restrictive funds, understanding those that are statutory restrictive and those that are non-statutory restrictive. And I have said, you know, coming, coming in, you know, we want to shake it up and do some things different, just because we did something for thirty years, doesn't mean we're going to continue doing it that way. There's a lot of good things in this budget. But there are some areas that, based on what I've heard from people out at the bus, where we had, you know, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people at all of these different stops. What I've heard and what I've read, not adding to the budget, but maybe shaking some things differently. I'll have certainly some of those inputs that I'll be presenting on December seventh. It's no secret that I would like to see more done with senior citizens. I'm getting calls all the time from seniors, and we do have a senior levy. However, since the levy, seniors are still getting hit with utility bills. And I want to thank Duke Energy, they, you're trying to work with us, but the rate is going up. We just did the property tax rebate because assessments have are going up in March, people are going to get hit hard. So some of these seniors, they want to stay in their homes. They they don't want to have to be forced out of their homes. So really looking at what we can do to add them as a a bullet point of this is a group we want to target. Certainly, I'm glad to see a youth office in there, but I want to see it a little more. I think we could do a lot more with internships and having youth be able to partner with us. The more we got youth working, the less we got youth doing the wrong thing. So looking forward to getting deep into this budget, and I want to thank again John Brugan administration and Jeff Aludo, because I have, I got lots of questions that I'm and and there's lots of things I want to say that those who are watching. There's a lot of things that's coming at us that's not just the budget, you know, with deadlines. So looking forward to December seventh and I'll have more questions as we move forward. I do want to thank Silverton. And I want to thank Forest Park for hosting us and having us out there to be able to come out there and host us. We appreciate that. And then I look forward to it. There were some things came out of there. I think Madam President may talk about the cemetery piece, which really caught my eye too, because I didn't really know. So there may be some some other tweaks that we might be looking forward to as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. The one thing I just want to highlight that's relative to the budget that we just did, I believe that was last week, I don't remember, was the community development revitalization grant that, you know, we saw for the first time in this year's budget. The expectation that we will do that again next year, but we had a lot of demand for those dollars. It was over, it was four, four-point-six million, and we only had one-point-one allocated for those grants. And so I have floated a memo to both offices about how we might change that for the current year to try to accommodate more of those requests, not all of them, but more of them. And so I am looking to expand that fund in the next budget cycle, given the demand out in the community, and also implement the impact grant that is in addition to that one. So there's a lot of economic development dollars being contemplated here. I'm just, you know, trying to, my memo will reflect trying to hit that mark, hit the right number, given the needs and the desires of some of our partners out in the local communities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to thank Silverton and Forest Park for allowing us to have the hearing. I want to thank the administration, of course, Jeff, and all the other staff that are working to bring this budget to us. It is a balanced budget. But it's also a structurally balanced budget, which allows us to do things we haven't been able to do in years. So that's a great thing. Seniors are also important, it sounds like to all of us. Veterans are very important. I'd like to get a breakdown, I think I maybe asked this before, of exactly the monies that are given to veterans. And then, as Vice President Reese had mentioned, the cemetery issue, how far we can go and what we can do legally for that. I just wish we had had more input from our residents. So I don't know if it means that they don't care about the budget, or they didn't think it made a difference to give input. But I want to believe that they trust us, that we're here, we're representing them, and they think we'll do the right thing. So that's where I'm going to kind of leave it. And as Jeff was saying, December the seventh, the commission offices will submit anything different to the budget office and administrator. So I'm hoping that we can pass this budget on December the fourteenth. Okay?
President?
Yes.
Can I ask another question that they could provide all of us? There's a position that's added in the budget. And I'll be honest, I don't quite agree with it. It's a government affairs position. And I had asked about, I think, if they could provide something to all of us. We currently have contracts, it's hard to find all of them, but we have contracts for companies, or I guess lobbying firms that represent us at the state and the federal level. And so my question was, one, how much are those contracts? And two, you know, I don't want to be duplicating. I mean, these firms, they are supposed to be there because they know the people, they know the players. And I want to know what that, you know, cost is to have now a person that would be just government affairs. It's no secret, that's one of the things in the budget that I don't think is necessary if we're keeping those contracts going. So I think if maybe we could get what the contracts are, how much they are, based on and what this is going to be. Because I think they, I don't know, but they've had, they seem to have represented us well on the cares money and the aura money. And I've been at the State House, and so has Commissioner Drehouse. So I was just kind of wondering, and we know sometimes people, they sit in the meetings, and they've got cookie cutter reports. All they do is sit here and report back. I mean, it's, the State House is filled with none but lobbyists sitting there. You don't have the people, because the people at work. But the lobbyists are sitting there, and their job is to make sure, you know, you say something, then they'll, they may say something. But we've had people testify that's been lobbying lobbying for years. And when they get up there, it's a cookie cutter testimony from, you know, I said, then I just hear this four years ago. So we don't want that. But I want to, I'd like to get more information. We don't have to have it today, but I like to get in writing all of us, so we know what what you're talking about.
My apologies, we should have sent that out already.
And Madam President, Madam Vice President, yes, so we'll get that specific information out to you. I think I had sent something related to the distinction between the the proposed position and those contracts. I'll go back and find that and refor that as well to all three as well. Because I think that, as you said, Madam Vice President, that's, you need that in context of the the three contracts, the multiple contracts as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. At this point, I'd like to make a motion with no further discussion to close the 2022 Hamilton County budget.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, you have before you, our next item is a public hearing for the MSD twenty-twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-six, I'm sorry, Capital Improvement Plan and the twenty-twenty-two MSD operating budget.
Hello, Diana. How's it going?
Good afternoon, Madam President and Commissioners. I'm just making sure it got up there. Okay, good, we're good. Thank you for having me today. I'm Diana Christie, the Director of MSD. This is our first public hearing on the twenty-twenty-two MSD operating budget and the five-year, which is twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-six Capital Improvement Program budget. I'm going to, today, we're going to go through both the budgets. And I have here with me, depending on questions, and where certain topics, you might need more information. I have Mary Lynn Loader, who is our Chief Operating Officer. Mary Lynn led the development of the operating budget. Ryan Welsh, our Chief Engineer, is here. He led the development of the Capital Improvement Plan. I also have Lauren DiGrisio, who is our Legislative Analyst for a later agenda item, and Matt Spadari, who is one of our principal engineers. So they're here with me today, depending on some questions you may have. So I'm going to start with just a few operational highlights. Sorry, who was jumping around? Thank you. Before we get into the the request. And just with a general orientation of MSD, for everyone who's listening, MSD is Hamilton County's Clean Water Utility. We we service this area primarily Hamilton County and small portions of surrounding counties, and we are continuously operating day and night. We serve a vital role in the health and economic prosperity of our region. We collect and treat over one-hundred-and-eighty-five-million gallons per day on average. And that is through a network of over three thousand miles of sewers, nearly one hundred pump stations. And we treat that wastewater at one of our nine treatment plants, so that clean water can be returned to our rivers and streams. In the past decade, we have added nine wet weather facilities, over forty-four acres and counting of green infrastructure and numerous storm sewers as we work to reduce sewer overflows that occur when too much rainwater enters our system and overflows before reaching treatment plants. Taking a closer look at our treatment process, this top figure shows by our nine treatment facilities, what we treat on average and the amount of flow that is discharged as clean water to our community. MSD is not only committed to delivering clean water, we are an environmental steward in all aspects of our operations, and that includes solids processing and air quality management. You can see here the amount of bio solids, which are a byproduct of our treatment plant. And we process those through incineration and landfilling. MSD has a plan for improving solids handling district-wide for more efficient environmentally friendly solids processing. We've also been making capital and operational improvements to address odor complaints with measured progress shown here. And before we move on to the twenty-twenty-two request, I want to pause and take note of a few things that we achieved in twenty-twenty-one. And we all had the opportunity to celebrate the Lick Run Greenway opening back in in late spring. And that project continues to be recognized locally and nationally. It is the first daily to stream to control, to control stormwater, storm sewer overflows and sewer overflows. And you can see here in the center of the slide, a picture of our Lick Run Greenway ambassadors. This is just one program that we partnered with the community this year to have individuals from the community out there as this becomes a public space and to help us move into the next phase of what the Lick Run Greenway can be for the community. MSD was also recognized by USCPA for its smart sewer system and innovative technology that allows us to reduce overflows at a fraction of the cost of traditional infrastructure improvements. And lastly, we are often called by customers in the midst of a crisis or in not-so-minor disruption due to a sewer issue on their property. And yet, we receive frequent unsolicited feedback praising our customer service crews for their courtesy, dedication and positive attitude. We included some snippets here and more in the budget book that was delivered to you and posted on our website. But I want to read a message I just received this morning. Yesterday at six PM, Donnie and Greg were called out for a sewer backup investigation and were able to clear a blockage in the lateral through the cleanout. Their supervisor received a call from the owner stating, "Donnie and Greg were fabulous and knocked it out of the park. Good guys got in there and got the job done. It was a beautiful thing. It was excellent." We we receive these often, and I just really want to thank the all of the customer service crews that are out there. They're they're very difficult situations, and they manage them really just, it's excellent service. So thank you, Donnie and Greg, and all of our customer service crews. Okay, so for the operating budget request, we did deliver to the commissioners a one-pager, if you want to refer to that, so you don't have to flip through the large book. The one-pager has the full request of all of the personnel, non-personnel and other categories. And it compares it with last year's approved budget. So here is the the snapshot of the twenty-twenty-two operating budget request, again, broken down by categories. Overall, this is a request for two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-million dollars for the twenty-twenty-two capital or the twenty-twenty-two operating year. That request includes over one-third for our debt payment, which is the eighty-five million. It is then broken out by the the personnel, non-personnel. We break out other non-personnel and the SBU for purposes of illustrating these budget categories. This is a little more than a six percent increase in total over the twenty-twenty-one budget, which is not unusual for our operations during these times. In a, in a recent survey by NACWA, which is the National Association for Clean Water Agencies, operation and maintenance costs, including management and daily operation of collection systems, treatment facilities, costs such as staff salaries, supplies, electricity, chemicals and contracted services have increased by an average of nine percent per year since twenty-seventeen. I'm going to get into more detail on the specific categories next. So starting with the personnel request of sixty-five million. This is a modest increase of three-point-four million over the twenty-twenty budget, and this will cover rising personnel costs for roughly six hundred employees. These cost increases were estimated based on the City of Cincinnati benefits and salary information known at the time prior to our August submittal. And since that time, our Ask Me Bargaining Unit did negotiate a higher cost of living increase, but we have not modified the request. MSD factors in a PVA or a vacancy credit each year, which accounts for unknowns and allows us to manage hiring based on approved funding each year. So with that vacancy and with the other potential unknown increases that could occur when additional negotiations occur with the bargaining units, at this time, we are keeping the personnel request as it was made in August. Again, with this approach, we really strive to balance our needs for staffing with the budget limitations in place. Every year, we have to make hard choices to fill, to fill positions or to hold positions depending on higher priority needs. For example, we recently really needed to add operators. That was in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. So we held a few senior management positions vacant. You can see there as well, just the figure below represents the the hiring that we made. That is from twenty-twenty. That was the total in twenty-twenty. So the positions that we were filling in that year. Next, this is just a quick breakdown, just to orient you with how we're organized. We do have seven, seven divisions at MSD, and they're listed here. So that's the Office of Director, Wastewater Engineering, Wastewater Administration, IT, Compliance Services, Wastewater Treatment and Wastewater Collection. The figure on the left shows you the the number of employees on the table of the organization by division. This is not the total number of funded positions. We are just working to climb back to our average staffing level of about six hundred positions filled after the COVID hiring freeze and early retirement left us very short-staffed in twenty-twenty. Wastewater Treatment and Wastewater Collection, as you can see, are the two largest divisions, making up more than half of our workforce. Nonetheless, our business support divisions like Wastewater Administration, IT are just as critical for maintaining the operations of the district and are valued members of our MSD team. So I'm going to move on to the non-personnel portion of the operating budget request. So the the non-personnel, again, the total of sixty-nine million is just referring to the non-personnel of each of the divisions. And again, as you can see here, we have the largest portion of the non-personnel costs are for our core operating divisions. That's Wastewater Collection, Wastewater Treatment and Compliance Services, which total nearly eighty percent of the non-personnel budget. We are experiencing significant increases in expenditures that are expected to continue in twenty-twenty-two. That is why this budget request is an increase of about nine million dollars over twenty-twenty-one. Details are provided on pages twenty, twenty and twenty-one of the budget book, which go into the specific increases that we have budgeted for in in the divisions. These are things like chemicals needed for the treatment and solids handling process, critical parts and equipment, power, hauling, disposal cost increases and general contractual increases due to supply chain impacts. MSD also needs additional funds for new assets that is, it has constructed, including Lick Run and other green infrastructure. including Lick Run and other green infrastructure, which have larger operational needs. In addition, we need to perform cleaning on our wet wells and digesters, which is not an annual expense, but is due coming in 2022. And we are seeking to perform an electric vehicle evaluation to pursue future cost savings and further advance sustainability initiatives. It's not advancing. Did it freeze, Bridgette? Oh, there we go. Oh, wait, I went one too far. Okay, next. We we have a separate. Are you moving it? David, good. Thank you. Our operating budget also covers capital outlay for our fleet and our OTA, which is Office Technology Equipment Allowance. And last year was the first year in many that the fleet budget was fully funded. We do have over $20 million worth of assets in our in our fleet. And delaying those needs, you know, will will have added costs over time. So we do really appreciate that funding and where what we were able to do this year and hope to continue with those investments next year. The OTA budget has already been trimmed by nearly half of what the request was when it came in from our divisions. And and the details of both the fleet and the OTA are in the appendixes of the budget book because they they are quite lengthy. Finally, on the non-personnel, we do call out this SBU budget just to highlight this separately. And we are requesting just over 11 million for the SBU program for 2022. This is essentially just a carryover budget from 2021 with a slight increase for inflation. The SBU program needs are unpredictable, as you all know, and we strive to manage the program expenditures within each component of the program. So that's the response and cleaning activities, the damages and prevention program. Those are the components required by the consent decree. Last year, we embarked on a pilot for mitigation through our operating program. And we have shared some preliminary status, a preliminary status report just earlier this week with the county administration. This could take its own meeting to discuss, but I did just want to highlight it here and mention that that mitigation study, we we do intend to continue that work. And we look forward to sharing details early in 2022. It's really hard to imagine this 2022. But the what we have here is just a little bit of information about the mitigation pilot. We did a study that is called a Low Rainfall Intensity Flooding Analysis, where we were able to really focus on certain SBU hotspots in low in low rainfall. And we did a pilot with operational controls that were installed to restrict flow from getting into our sewer system. This is very early, but we do have some, and we are seeing some positive results. And we look forward to continue evaluating that and expanding that program. There are other components of the mitigation study, again, that were summarized and just shared recently. I'm going to just proceed to the capital unless anyone wants me to pause here. Okay, thank you. Okay, so MSD's CIP budget is focused primarily on capital commitments to repair and replace aging infrastructure and improvements needed to address sewer overflows. We submit a five-year plan, which is approved every year, but funds are only requested and approved for the first year of the plan. Of the request for 2022, which is a little over 136 million, only a portion of those funds are appropriated during the budget time. Those are for engineering, planning, and design of various projects and some construction in the case of allowances. Funding for construction projects is actually appropriated after we come back to the board with detailed plans and specs. You present those and you approve the construction funding on a per-project basis throughout the year. So as you can see, the tables here, we're showing the full five-year plan. We have a breakdown by project phase and category. So our project phases is the planning, the design, the construction. And we need to recognize that each one of these projects that appears in the CIP has a life cycle on average of five years. So meaning we are in 2022 going to be continuing work on many projects that were approved in prior years. And they will have, you know, whether they have a funding request in 2022 or not, they are still a project that is proceeding through its appropriate planning or design phase. We also show the breakdown by our category of projects, which is, and we break these down by the WIP, which is our Wet Weather Improvement Plan, or the Consent Decree Projects, the Asset Management Projects, and other. For asset management, these are all the projects that we have to renew, replace, or enhance our existing infrastructure. And with an aging system like ours, our asset management needs consistently exceed the funding available. MSD has assets that are valued on the order of $15 billion. An annual reinvestment rate of only 1%, which is a recommended minimum under industry standards, would amount to 150 million annual capital budget. So that's without any consent decree funding. In response to this, knowing that we do not have funding for that large of an asset management budget, we've developed comprehensive asset management systems to actively proactively identify risks and needs in advance. And we seek to prevent failures that would result in public health and safety threats or environmental hazards. The other projects, as I mentioned, these are just projects where the funding will be allocated at the end of the year as either WIP or asset management. Things like program contingency and our labor for our engineers that work on the capital program. So focusing on the 2022 CIP budget request. As you can see here, we do show a increase over 2021 of the approved CIP. And there are more details comparing it to prior years in the budget book. But it is about a 10% increase, and that is primarily due to needs at both of our our largest treatment plants. And the request includes 59 projects. And again, those are through various phases of the project planning, design, or engineering. And the 2022 request, the the full five-year CIP includes Phase 2A WIP projects that are currently proposed. And these include planning, design, and construction of pump station upgrades and high-rate treatment facilities of the sewer district's three largest treatment plants. These three projects are foundational to achieving significant reduction of sewage overflows. In addition, the projects will increase reliability of existing wastewater treatment plants. As we know, Phase 2 is not finalized, but MSD needs to continue planning and design work of critical path projects. And the 2022, in addition, the key priorities, we just listed a few projects here. I don't want to go into all of them just in the interest of time. But a few of the noteworthy ones are listed here. And generally, again, the CIP for 2022 includes a number of projects. They range from projects that will upgrade sewers to prevent risk of backups, projects that add sewer pumping capacity to eliminate overflows, and facility projects at multiple treatment plants that are required to increase reliability and permit compliance and reduce the production of off-site overs. Noteworthy on here, we have the Mill Creek HRT Pump Station Design Request. That's $14 million. This is an extremely important project. Not only is it a WIP project, but this will this pump station is long considered to be our highest-risk asset. I'm replacing it as part of the the High Rate Treatment Facility. Will eliminate the the risk of this pump failing. This facility has this this pump station has been a nonstop operation since 1959. And replacing it will significantly reduce the risk of an outage that will result in raw sewage discharges exceeding 100 million gallons per day for an extended period. Similar reliability benefits will result from the construction of the pump stations at the other facilities, Little Miami and Muddy Creek. The second project I wanted to highlight was the Little Miami Solids Disposal Facility that's included in the budget. And this project needs to continue without delay. This facility must be constructed prior to the start of construction of the Little Miami High Rate Treatment Facility because the current solids dewatering facility occupies the physical space that is required to construct the planned high-rate treatment facility. Additionally, the construction of the Little Miami Solids Facility will replace an unsustainable disposal process with an anaerobic digestion process that will produce a pathogen-free class A fertilizer product while also producing biogas that will be used to offset the treatment plant's reliance on fossil fuel-derived energy. Currently, dewatered bio solids from the Little Miami Facility and other outline plants have been transported to the Rumpie landfill. This has been going on since decommissioning of the Little Miami Incinerator in 2016. And again, we list there a few of the other high-priority asset management projects as well as our capital allowances. The Prioritized Wastewater Collection System Improvements Allowance is critical for us to to be able to perform these projects throughout the year. Again, as we were saying before, doing the planned projects instead of having to react to emergencies is the most efficient way for us to manage our aging collection system. Okay, and moving on to revenue. This is, it's a little hard to see, but our revenue projection for 2022 and 2021, as we're not through this year, we continue to see some recovery from COVID impacts that showed a reduce a reduction in revenue in 2020. MSD revenue is primarily from our sewer service charge. This is collected from all users and includes a base charge and a volume charge. Sewer surcharges are collected for high-strength waste of customers or of commercial and industrial customers who also pay that sewer service charge. We we show here the CAT program. I wanted to point out the MSD Customer Assistance Program does represent a small revenue loss. However, we are able to help at present. We have approximately little over 2,250 customers enrolled in this program. They are saving 25% on their sewer bill. This is for eligible seniors who meet low-income requirements and own their homes. MSD recently conducted some outreach for the CAT program and had a very positive response and received over 300 new applications. Next, so the MSD rates have not been adjusted since 2015. They are currently, we currently have an average user with $610 per year. And this is comparable to other similar utilities. And during that time, the Consumer Price Index has risen 16%. In addition to these rising costs, MSD has added to its operations with new wet weather facilities and system improvements. MSD is doing everything we can to manage within budget constraints. We view ourselves as not only environmental stewards, as I've talked a lot about, but fiscal stewards, and we're balancing between making the necessary investments in our system for aging infrastructure and reducing sewer overflows and ensuring that our rates are affordable and do not pose a burden on our ratepayers. These are some of the tools we have for financing capital projects, as you can see to the right. And we're also often managing costs and looking for cost savings in other innovative ways. This is this is just a some of the information that was also included in more detail in your budget book. But as you can see, there is, there are funds left over sometimes at the end of the year. We do our best to budget, but any of the unspent budget authority each year is available. We did save a significant amount of money with the Lower Mill Creek Partial Remedy that led to the Lick Run Greenway over the default project of the tunnel. We saved money with flow monitoring, where we're able to conduct this routine flow monitoring for much less annually. And we, of course, together with the county, have refinanced our debt, and we have saved a lot of money that way. As mentioned, with some of the decisions we make on personnel, we have recently consolidated some of our divisions. So we we actually reduced two senior-level positions in the last year and a half. We're also working on some rate restructuring initiatives. The one that I I know we weren't able to to present to the commissioners, and again, that needs a meeting in and of itself. But we began working on an enhanced rate structure earlier this year in collaboration with the county. This is to this is to recommend an impervious surface charge for wet weather costs. And this would be done throughout the district. We hope to update the board and whenever you're ready to have us. So it could be next week or it could be in January. And then from there, we would expect that we would make a recommendation to proceed. I do want to point out that this kind of a rate restructuring effort will take a significant amount of time. We're really just at the feasibility study phase. So there is 18 to 24-month implementation schedule if it is something that we want to proceed with. Other areas where we're looking at rates is revisions of our hauled waste cost recovery. So we're looking at a tiered waste structure, and that would be a way to enhance the equity of recovery of costs there. And finally, there are other changes that have been discussed but not in detail, and we look forward to evaluating changes to the volumetric charges, minimum charges, the hauled waste rates, and bringing those to the commissioners next year. We could time all of these structural changes to our rates to align with the larger initiative for the impervious surface charge, or we could pursue some of them at a different pace. Again, we happy to answer more questions on those issues, but at that point, I believe that was my last slide. So I'm ready to take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't invite questions. We may not have any. But anyway, thank you so much for your presentation. What I would like to do, if the board is okay with it, to ask Ms. Wall to come up since she's been patiently waiting, and then we can give any comments that we may have.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Wall. I'm speaking on behalf of Sierra Club. As we do every year, it seems, we would like to request that it be a policy to get the budgets for the MSD 30 days in advance.
Can you bring that microphone a little bit closer? Are you, if you feel comfortable, you can take your mask down.
Okay. We'd like to get 30 days of comment period from the official documents. And we do appreciate that the county has provided some early versions of the CIP. But there's a lot more information that's really needed to understand what's going on in all these projects and to be able to comment. MSD is producing less reporting now. They don't do a capital budget report. They don't do the monthly reports that we used to get on on WIP projects or on the enterprise projects that the MSD or that the county used to get. And those would be very helpful in continuing to get those again. MSD did provide some information, additional information on financials that we had asked for, which we think is all very important to being able to comment on the CIP. And we're very concerned about the lack of progress on the Phase 2A. It's now been three years since this, the Phase 2 was supposed to begin. We are also concerned about the lack of progress in implementing projects related to the consent decree, getting rid of basement backups and sewer overflows. The 2021 budget had 14 WIP projects for 39 million. And in reviewing this, it appears that MSD, as of October 13th, had only spent 6.8 million on those projects. There was no spending on five projects. There are three, part of those projects included three bridge projects, which are in late, that should have been completed in 2019 or 2020, and now stretch out to 2022 or 2023. And the dry weather project that is was supposed to be constructed was still in design at this point. I have lots more. I can give you copies or.
Certainly, if you could send us copies, we'll give it to the clerk and she'll disperse it to us.
I really didn't get to the 2022 budget at all, but there are concerns we have about that because we have major projects that are being implemented without really discussing or having discussions about the full cost of these projects, which are in the hundreds of millions. And that'll greatly impact the consent decree, the amount of time it takes to implement these, and the impact on people's basements and backups, as well as the sewer overflows. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'd like to, the less reporting that was mentioned by Ms. Wall. If we can maybe look into what she was getting and what she's not getting now, that would be great, Diana and Jeff. So thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, I will open it up for any questions or comments from Vice President Reese.
First of all, I just want to say thanks for the presentation and thank you for the testimony. So we'll be reading. This is very helpful as well. I I have one question first.
Diana, could you come to the podium? Thank you.
I have my first question, and I'd ask the administration this, or maybe you know. I have, my first question, and I'd ask the administration this, or maybe you know this, Diana. What is the, what does the ORC say? Or what is the law in terms of passing this? We're getting a lot, a lot's coming at a lot of people. We want the public, MSD is a very important component. I mean, that's, we hear a lot from consumers, voters about MSD. And so we also have a budget here that we're trying to get passed, and we just have the property rate and some other things. So what is the timeline that this has to be passed by? Or voted on rather?
Sure, and Commissioner, I think without knowing exactly off the top of my head what the ORC says about timing, MSD's operating budget does need to be appropriated annually in order to continue the operations of the district. I would like to point out that we presented, we shared the, the request itself, the funds with a breakdown by division for personnel and non-personnel for our operating budget on August 16th. That was a public document available while we aren't having the hearings till today. We have not modified the operating budget request. The CIP request was also shared on that date in August, and it has only been modified and mostly in collaboration with the county team, but it was also reduced, not increased. So to the extent that there is a concern about the amount of time that individuals have had to review it, I just wanted to point that out. So the, the public hearings were noticed, as is standard, and that is in the revised code. And the public hearings were noticed just about two weeks prior. And the budget books were posted on our website for anyone who, you know, received those notices. We also send out fairly large mailing that we have a mailing list for, so.
And as a county, are we the only funder of, when you say your annual budget, does the city put in anything?
No, MSD is not funded by the county, MSD is funded by ratepayers. So the revised code points out that all of the revenue that MSD collects, as I shared, you know, the county is the, is the owner by law and the county authorizes and appropriates those funds, but the, the funding only comes from ratepayers. It is the only, other than we do have some grants and other sources that we can apply for. But our day-to-day operating budget is funded solely by the ratepayers. And the way it works through the 1968 agreement is that the, the rates are, or the, the budget once it's passed is transferred to a fund held by the City of Cincinnati. And so it is all managed by the City of Cincinnati Finance Financing System.
When you talk about your annual, you talking December to December or January to January? Or is it on a, like the federal is not?
Yeah, we're on, on the calendar year as to follow the county's budget.
Just to answer Commissioner Reese's question, so MSD is a 6117 county sewer district. I, I don't believe there is anything in 6117 that speaks specifically to the timeline. I would acknowledge Director Christie's comments about the, obviously the need to appropriately fund the utility, ensure bond payments can be made, ensure operations can occur. But I don't believe to your question specifically, Commissioner, that there is a specific date that the budget has to be passed for a 6117 sewer district by X date or something like that.
Madam President, I just wanted to follow up to your point about the reporting. Because this still is new for me, so I really want to put time to delve into this. I know you gave us a, I know Diana, Director, you gave us, you know, one of the customer service people, and they said it was great and everything. I don't know what that percentage is, but my office, nobody's called me, you say it's great. Everybody's calling me with complaints. We're at the 513 relief buses, a whole group of people, so they waiting on me to show up about MSD. We are on there for rental assistance. So I really want to have a good understanding. I think some of these issues that are here, maybe get a chance to get these addressed and maybe back to us. I know we're just getting them today. But that reporting, and I'm not saying every time you send me a report, I could stop what I'm doing and read, read just that report. But I think it would maybe help those who are watching this, you know, MSD. But we got to figure out something because I'm telling you, my office is, I haven't gotten one positive saying it's going great. And so I just want to change that, and I know our office gets a lot of complaints for other things, but we also have been getting calls when people do a great job too. So it's kind of been a balanced, a balance rather. So as far as like increasing rates and all that, I'm not ready for that type of conversation. We are in a, in a situation right now where people are barely able to survive and the middle class is getting crushed because there's just not much out there to help them. So I do want to follow up with Madam President about the reporting. And to the administration, we had at the beginning of the year, because I've been on this MSD piece, we sent some, some language and we were, you're supposed to check on two things. One, if there was something that we could do creatively on MSD, you say you were working on it and working on it. Is that something that we're ready to put forward that would help the ratepayers? And then the other piece was a piece of legislation, I know it had to go to Columbus, but do we have any any news on that? I know I sent one directly to the governor, but there were some others that were working on those. I hadn't heard much about that, and that's been, I don't know, several months, maybe back in March or February. Okay, great, and maybe all of the commissioners make sure all of us get a copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duryhouse.
Thank you, Madam President. I've got a bunch of questions, but I was also wondering if we could hear from Karen Ball. She's the monitor. She is intimately familiar with these reports, Karen, I don't mean to put you on the spot. But she is our monitor for all things MSD, and we've had this information, Karen has reviewed it in depth. And I'm wondering if we could just get her take on both the operating and the capital budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Again, Karen Ball, Hamilton County Compliance Coordinator. Yes, the county monitor team, Joe Graff is here as well today from the team. We have been reviewing both the operating and capital budget. We've submitted a series of questions to MSD, we've received some answers back and, and some, you know, we still have to work on. To the reporting, I, I'm really glad that that's an important thing for, for the commissioners because it's an important report that your county monitor team would love to be able to analyze on a monthly basis once again. I know MSD is working on it. We've gone through now two years of, of not having monthly reports, so that's a bit of a challenge. And, and we're largely working remote right now. So we're, we're dependent on MSD sharing their information with us. And so in the meantime, we're still working very diligently with the attorneys for both the city and the county on the Phase 2 negotiations. So you will see some projects listed in the, the CIP book that haven't necessarily been approved by the regulators yet. But they're, having said that, we do have to move some things forward. So we have some forward motion when we, when we get approval from the, from the regulators. We have not had any in-depth project meetings with the regulators just yet. Nor have we had any in-depth financial meetings with the regulators yet for affordability. Those are all still going to be ongoing, and that's going to be happening likely in the very early part of next year. I guess one more thing, the impervious surface fee rate structure restructuring is going to be an important component to providing the relief for residential customers. And, and I'm really glad that it kind of got delayed because it, it needs its own space and time for, for your attention and deliberation. So there's a lot going on. If you have any specific questions about specific projects, we can certainly answer them for you. MSD did submit the capital budget on, in August, on August 17th. We received a, a version on November 10th and a version on November 18th, and each one was a little different. So we're still kind of cutting through the changes that were made.
Well, thank you so much. And as it relates to the reports, they need to start now. And also to go back, it sounds like two years, our department has not received them, so I don't know if, you know. So we need to start those reports and definitely before we approve any sort of budget. But I'm hoping that we can approve the budget in December if possible. Do you want to say?
And may I just follow up with Karen for a second? So I was more, I'm, I'm also interested in getting your, kind of your first blush impression of the presentation, the two different budgets that we have in front of us. Looking for kind of what your impressions are. I know we're not, none of us are finished going through all the material. But what are your first blush impressions? And I'm really looking to the whole team, you know, for that information.
Okay, so the county team has heard the, the comments that have been made by the commissioners over the course of the last several months, September 14th. And then again, a couple of weeks ago, when there were, I think it was November 18th, when there was a large number of MSD projects. So we take your comments and we try to make sure that they are addressed appropriately and bring back responses to you if MSD is not able to do that right away. We do know that there are some concerns about the, the number of, of projects that have not yet advanced to construction. And we, we are looking at the amount of projects that are in planning and the amount of projects that are being proposed to be added to that planning right now. So there's, you know, there's, there's a, a lot of questions that, that you have asked over the course of the last two months that we're trying to make sure are getting answered and, and dealt with appropriately.
Thank you. Yeah, so now I'm just going to go into my other questions real quick for Diana primarily. So to piggyback on that, this, the lack of progress issue is something that we heard from our speaker. And also, we, we have heard some concern about this, about projects being delayed, which might lead to increased costs and just, you know, delays, which neither of which are good. And so could you help us? And to clarify, we've got one more public hearing coming up on Tuesday, which is at the staff meeting, which I think will be maybe a better venue to really dig into some of this stuff. But if you could provide us at that time with maybe a visual, a chart of projects that have been agreed to and the progress of the, you, you had said, you know, I think we all understand that these projects take a very long time to design, engineer, you know, construct. And you referred to a timeframe of about five years per project. I know that varies, but could you give us a chart of, you know, what we have approved in the past, where those projects are? Why we're looking at, what we're looking at this year? You know, just give us a better understanding of that so that we can better understand progress or lack of progress on different projects. So just kind of a general overview of that. The other questions, I just, so we, let me get to the, the meat of the, the one issue that was raised by Commissioner Reese. Is there a rate increase recommendation in this budget?
No, Commissioner, we did not actually make a recommendation. We instead provided all of the information from our, our financial expert that showed, you know, several different options. And we're seeking feedback from county administration and yourselves really on what is desired.
But oftentimes you will come with a recommendation like that, and that, that's not, I, I didn't see it, that's why.
That's correct, and I believe the last two years we did.
Right, okay, all right, I just didn't, didn't know if I had missed it, Diana, I was just checking. So I, too, I'm very, very anxious to see the impervious surface fee report. I, I find that we've delayed it to January. I know it's a, it'll have a huge impact on our budget. And I, and it'll, you know, take months and months to implement. But I'm really anxious to see, because, you know, if we were to construct something that brings in more revenue related to impervious surfaces, it's going to change the context of the budget. And so I'm very anxious to see that, and I'm looking forward to a robust conversation. We appointed a number of individuals from the community to sit on that task force. And they've done, and I've heard from some of them about the, the nature of the work. So just very anxious to hear what those recommendations are going to be. Couple other smaller things, you mentioned the SBU program, something that we all hear about. I think of, of all the MSD issues, this is the one we hear the most about. And did you say that it's 11 million in this budget? And put that in context for us, I mean, what was there last year, what kind of increases that? And, and I heard you also say that you're doing more preventive measures to try to eliminate some of the SBUs to begin with. I appreciate that, always a good thing, but I didn't understand the context for the 11 million.
Sure, so the SBU budget request is 11.2 million, 11,213,000, which is just 200,000 higher than last year, essentially in places where we didn't have known cost increases, and, and the SBU program is one of those where it's, it's often after the fact, we, we did apply just a general 2% increase. But we otherwise are, are requesting the same budget for 2022 as we have this year in 2021 for the SBU program. This covers everything that is required to respond, clean, pay damage claims. You know, under the consent decree, the installation of the prevention program, which tends to be the highest cost part of the program, those, those installations are, are costly. And so this year, you know, we, we did actually just recently provide a status report of our expenditures under the program. Doesn't look like we will use the full budget unless we have a big storm in 2021. But really, you know, we were just requesting some consistency. We did embark on a mitigation study using that SBU operating funding this year. And that was just to, you know, look at other ways, you know, without capital projects, this is just operating changes. Some things where we're actually looking at the, the flow that is getting into our system. We're also looking at just communication and outreach to private property owners that they understand what they can do on their own to be preventative. And we could potentially have some recommendations for incentivizing private property action. You know, so we're, we're really putting all this together to come to you with some different approaches to the SBU program out of that, you know, those traditional pieces that are required by the consent decree. So a little bit more of a proactive approach, and a lot of it involves, as I said, outreach and communication with property owners to understand, you know, what, what they could do to prevent or to mitigate their own risk. And, you know, what MSD can do and helping people understand that prior to being impacted by a sewer backup.
So is there money rolling over from last year to this year in this fund?
Any unspent funds would not roll over under the operating program unless they've been, we do have some funding, you know, if it's already on a contract, but generally, no, we would just be again, looking at next year, at, you know, managing the SBU budget to continue to, a lot, a lot of this is work we're doing internally, so it's just.
Okay, can I, so I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I want to, again, this is one that is of high concern to constituents. And so I want to make sure we're hitting the mark here. So could you then just give us the budget for what was spent last year? And, and get, I just am looking for the context for the 11 million. How much did we spend last year, maybe even the year before? And is this 11 million the most appropriate amount? That's all I'm asking for. Okay. The other, so, and then I, and I too wanted to just mention the customer assistance program. So we have been asking for some kind of notice or flyer or something in the water bills because that's where people get charged to the sewer fee. And I know internally, we've had some conversations with Water Works, what is the status of that?
Yeah, so we previously did have that on the water bill, and then there was a modification to, you know, just to the layout of the bill, and they reduced our space. We temporarily pulled the SBU out, SBU add off and then realized that that is a requirement under the consent decree that we advertise the, or you know, that we have information on the water bill about the SBU program and how to contact us. So rather than trying to squeeze all the information in a really small space, we looked at some different outreach opportunities for the customer assistance program. And so just in November, we sent a mailer out to about 90,000 customers based on, you know, the demographics, we felt that would be a target. And that's, that's where we did receive a really high response rate, even, even more so than when we did have it in the bill. But for 2022, we are looking at two options still for the water bill, which is, you know, to either get more space or to go ahead and put them both on the small box that we have. Or to do an insert, where they can put a, you know, put an insert into the mailers, there's just a. There's just a cost to that. So we were trying to compare the direct mail that we could send versus putting it in the bill. But we have those outreach activities planned going into next year. I mean, and are happy to, you know, take any recommendations or suggestions.
Yeah, well, I think, and I think I've heard all three of us say that insert to the water bill is something that we think is a good idea. I don't know what the cost of that is, so maybe you can provide that to us so that we know we're, you know, what we're getting into. But I really think that some people haven't taken advantage of that program. They're not even aware of the program. And I think we all are, you know, we set it up and as partners with MSD to make sure that those that most needed the relief had it. So I think maybe it's time again, because that's been a while back, to make sure that that flyer goes into the water bill. So, you know, I, I, maybe you can provide us with that cost so we know what that is. Also, I can't pass up the opportunity to ask about the odor control issue in Lower Price Hill and what the status is on that. I haven't heard anything lately about odor control. I feel like that's good news, but just wanted to make sure that those projects were moving forward. If not complete, I mean, some of them are complete, right?
Some of the large capital projects are, are, you know, are not complete, but there's been a lot of work on the, on site and a fair amount of, you know, operational work as well. I know Mary Lynn is the one that meets with the, the local community there on a quarterly basis and we provide updates. So if you want to just give a quick update on that, I don't want to, you know, state something that's incorrect, yeah.
Yeah, with regards to the, you know, the, the community advisory panel that we have, that I think you may have attended some of those meetings. We were really focusing on six primary projects. So many of those projects have been completed. And so that, that is great because, you know, for example, you know, our dewatering polymer, we have a new system in that, that's really helped to process solids in a good way. However, our solids process is, is, is old and outdated and needs update. And Ryan can talk a little bit about that. Our odor complaints are down in 2021. If you look at the trend that was on one of those slides, it does show that in 2021, our odor complaints are down, you know, looking at prior years and whatnot. So that's good, we're trending in the right direction. But like I always like to say, it's a constant thing. Odors are always going to be an issue we have to deal with, so we have to stay on top of it. And again, our operators, our maintenance crews do a great job trying to keep things operational. But there are a lot of things that, again, that's what needs the, the reinvestment or the operating dollars to get it done. So, but there are two primary projects that are really critical for keeping the, keeping the process working well that's in the solids. That's the solids odor control, which is, I believe, construction, not next year, but the year after. And then the design of the new dewatering process. And Ryan, you can chime in on others.
Yeah, I think it's important to add real quick. So one of the biggest differences between the August version, the draft CIP and the current version is the removal of the Mill Creek digester covers and odor control project. The reason for that is that project grew from originally expected $2 million in 2017 to over $22 million construction. And we looked at that and said, that's, that's not right. We've got to do something different. So there's a need for a bigger, more holistic project. But, and this speaks to, you know, one of, you asked about project delays and why we're, we're getting, why projects don't move forward. With this one specifically, an outcome was picked. Normally you start with planning, you, you look at all your possibilities and you, you determine where you end up. In this case, the, the outcome was picked before any engineering, planning or design was done. So when we tried to fit this and, you know, fit this into design, this is where it led. And the reason that outcome was picked, you know, it was a form, it was an agreement between the former director and the county monitor. They said, do this, it should cost about $2 million. We did the work and it's $22 million. So we, there is a need, it's in the CIP book for design in the later part of the, the five-year plan. There's definitely a need, but that's one, that's probably the biggest change between August and now. It's removal of that project, the need hasn't gone away and we're, and we haven't forgotten about it. But, you know, we could, we could spend a whole meeting on specific projects and why each one has been delayed, but, but that's the reason for that one.
Yeah, and when, and I think it is important for us to understand the need for the project and why it's been delayed. And not only that, but the cost associated with that. Not only cost increase that would maybe be associated with that, but also the money that's been set aside for these projects. And that kind of gets to this idea of, you know, how much money we have, the rates are, are, you know, are they sufficient? Because as projects don't move forward, that money, and I, it's allocated in portions, but some money is allocated for these projects. And so I would, you know, maybe as we get that, the chart about the projects and the, where they are in the process, you know, delay or no delay, I would love to see the ones that are running right on time. But also some of the cost impacts there, you know, to, to the money that we have and whether, how quickly that money's going out the door for these projects. So and I've got one other question and, because I will have questions for Tuesday. But this one, it struck me and I don't know, this might be for Diana. When we talk about revenue loss for MSD and the revenue that's generated is through rates to customers, I'm curious to know why we would see a revenue loss? What is that attributable to? Yeah, unlike a sales tax, for instance, that.
It's either a reduction in consumption of water or people not paying their, their water bills.
Well, that's what I was afraid of. So is, and when you said some of this was COVID-related, does that mean that you had a revenue loss because people were not paying the bills? Is that primarily what we're seeing? And now you're seeing an uptick in that because people, things have stabilized a bit and people are now paying those back due bills?
Diana can answer this a lot better, but a lot of it, the remote working, you know, the restaurants were closed, businesses sent all their people home to work. And that the water usage might have been outside of our service area. So, you know, some of that, a lot of that reduction wasn't people just not paying bills. It was actual usage went down.
Can we see a breakdown of that? I'd be really curious to see that. I've never heard you talk about revenue loss before because it's so stable, right? Because it's the rates that people pay every year. So I'd really like to better understand those dynamics.
Sure, and Ryan is correct. We saw two, we saw a couple of things. One was reduction in the consumption on the commercial industrial side, a slight increase on residential, but not enough to make up that reduction. So, you know, people, businesses were shut down for a period of time and may not have recovered. And, and then we also did see some impact from the people not paying their bills. And really the, the fact that there was a moratorium on shut offs and in fact, there still is. So we were not shutting water off, which is one of the tools that, you know, brings those delinquencies back to us. That, that really led to, you know, for at least that period of time, the reduction. So with the, the funding that's available, we are working to recover some of those delinquencies. And I forget which, which one of the recovery acts had funding for the delinquents, delinquent utility bills. But, you know, we are seeing some and we can also provide that information as well. What, what has actually been repaid to MSD through that?
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, can I add just one more? I apologize, just, oh, now it's gone. What was I going to ask you?
Okay, we're moving on.
Oh, no, no, I know what it was. No, 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 I know what it was, I know what it was. So I'm bouncing around a little bit. So back to SBU. So we've had a lot of conversations about SBU, as you know. And you, you talked about, you know, bringing that back to us, giving, giving us a full understanding of the, the dollars and what's been spent and what's not been spent. There was a, some commentary by a guest, I don't know how long ago, related to overland flooding. So there were folks during a heavy weather event that had not backup in the basement, right? It wasn't SBU, it was overland flooding. Yet there, the result of that overland flooding was that they had water in their basements. And so I know you all are always trying to decipher, you know, what is a true SBU and what's overland flooding. And it's the comment that we had was related to the capacity, you know, in, in the sewers, the capacity to accept that stormwater in a heavy rain event. Could you just layer that into your SBU report back to us? Whether you have looked into anything like that? I mean, you must have some information because you're always making these determinations. And if there's anything out there that we can be doing better or differently to alleviate, and I, look, I know these are heavy weather events and I know climate change is real. I just do wonder if there's anything we can do related to this overland flooding question to try to alleviate some of that as well, kind of as an aside to the SBU program. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I take a chance to respond on the reporting quickly? Or did you?
No, Commissioner Reese had some, she was doing a follow up on a follow up.
I'll wait.
Madam President, I just wanted to follow up on two things. One, those who are watching and for myself, I would like to, can you talk about what is the impervious surface charge and who is charged for that? You said entire district.
So the, I just scratched the surface of this topic. So this is something we're just studying. We're evaluating the feasibility of restructuring our rates so that instead of, right now, users pay based on their water consumption. The idea is that, I mean, we would restructure our rates in, to capture a usage for water that comes to us through impervious surfaces. So runoff from pavement, it's the simplest way to, to look at it. And the cost that, that is for us to then treat that stormwater. And so the, this is a, a strategy we've been working on with the county. And before you were on the commission, this was, you know, a request from the commissioners that the county would lead this. So we've been, it's, it's very, you know, complicated but important analysis that we've been working on over this year. We've been working with the task force, both a stakeholder group and another agency task force to evaluate all these issues and will be coming to.
No, I got that part, but who would pay it?
Everyone, all of our users. You would pay both a volumetric, you know, water charge and you would pay an imperviousness charge. It is not bringing in new revenue. It is a way to redistribute and to, for us to collect the cost based on the cost for us to treat, whether it's wastewater or water that's coming through imperviousness. So as an individual resident or an industrial user, you could have fees being, you could be paying based on two different fee structures. So your bill would be bifurcated in a sense.
Will my bill go up?
It depends.
Okay, so I just want to hold that thought because you came, oh, we ain't, we gonna do nothing, the rates, no rates. Now you also have on here, under MSD rate restructuring initiative. You got that one part I just talked to you about. Now you got another thing called holistic rate restructuring. Now, my question to that is, now we talk about holistic changing, will any rates go up?
So all of these are ways for us to, again, we, we're, MSD is a county sewer district where we use restricted funds from our rate payers. There's no profit. We have to take in enough revenue to cover our expenses, pay our debt, to pay our capital. So our revenue has to be at a sufficient level to fund the utility. We're not trying to bring in more money. We're trying to redistribute how we collect those fees to cover our costs based on the cost it is to treat, the cost for our operations. So it will depend residential versus industrial versus large landowners or small landowners. All of these are different ways to restructure our rates. And typically, and I think one of the goals would be, and this is what we're looking at, would be to, you'd see maybe a reduction for residential users, but you'd see an increase for commercial. Now, that's just a very general statement, but, you know, it's not bringing in new revenue. It's redistributing how we charge for our services. So I can't say for any one group.
I think, I think for me, and, and that's why I really don't want to pass this budget in December because I got another budget that I got to really deal with. And this needs to take some time.
None of that's in this budget.
Yeah, but we've heard today that one, we're not getting the reports. And every time we ask, it's kind of, well, sort of, kinda. Then we've, we had our person come up and say, we haven't gotten reports in two years. And then, well, sort of, kinda. Then we asked about the projects, I think a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, I can't remember. And we said, these projects aren't coming forward and they're pushed off. And then the cost is up and then, well, kind of, sort of. Then we had a rate, a rate payer back here. She came up and had a, she got a whole list of front and back. It's a kind of, sort of. Commissioner Drehouse asked a bunch of questions. Well, what about the odor? Because we heard a lot about that odor and that people don't like that odor. And you said, well, I don't know, that's a change. So, I mean, it's just a lot of, well, I don't knows. And I just want to get with our team and your team so that when they bring it to us, we got what it needs to be. Now, you're saying this is not in there, but you presented it today. MSD rate restructuring, it shouldn't even be presented. You said you looking into it. Holistic rate restructuring. And when I hear restructuring, it's just like a menu. When they change the menu at the restaurant, we got a new menu. And usually when you see the menu, they done up the cost. And so I just, right now, I, my biggest thing is keeping the cost down. You just said that your revenues are down because people couldn't pay the water bill. Now your revenue should come back up thanks to the American Rescue Plan and CARESAC. And, because we paid a whole lot of water bills out here with the bus and with the people that called JFS. Well, we done gotten millions that came out to the water company. So those numbers should go back up. But my point is, if they struggling now to pay anything, and now we coming with this wells restructuring, and I ask straight up, is the rates going up? That's all I care about. Are they gonna pay more? And that's what we want to be able to tell the people. And with that, is there so many, I'm getting, I just got so many complaints. So I will probably have a lot more questions when I can delve into it and really have the time to delve into it, not having a budget on top of us where we got to deal with JFS and we got to deal with the stadiums and the parking funds and we got to deal with the property tax rollback rate and a number, a number, a number of other issues. But you put it in your PowerPoint, so it must mean something when you put in here MSD rate restructuring initiative. So I do agree with Madam President, I agree with you. We got to get these reports before we make any moves. I do agree with Commissioner Drehouse. We've got to, you know, get a response to this odor that's out there that we told people we were gonna work on. And she had a number of other questions, I think, that are appropriate. And I do want our team to be able to answer these questions and be on board because we really go with what they say, because they are the ones that are kind of the monitoring with you. So those are, those are my, my observations from today's hearing.
Thank you. Karen, would you like to speak to any?
Can I please respond to a few of those statements?
Sure.
Thank you. Well, I, I just think it's really important to respond first and foremost on the rate restructuring. These are things that we, we have, we do, you know, MSD, we're the financial, we, we hold the finances. We have a financial team. We bring these to both the administration and your team. We would bring them to the commissioners. There would be a public hearing. There is no rate changes until they are brought to the board and approved by the board. So these are things we're evaluating so that we can bring them to you and make a recommendation. You were scheduled to come on Tuesday, which we were, yeah, on this Tuesday, which we were postponed to, to lay this out because it's a really, it's, it's something that would take a lot of time and explanation. The holistic rate restructuring is just something more, is, or things that we're thinking of in addition to the impervious, the impervious surface fee. That was something that we were asked by you to evaluate. So, so that is just first and foremost. Just to clarify for anyone, there is no, this budget is, you would be passing an operating budget and a capital budget. What you decide to do with the rates is the commission, you know, is up to the commissioners. And we just bring recommendations. Today, we don't have any of that. The word, we're just evaluating these, these changes. Second, and I know Ryan's here to chime in on the reports because I think this is really important in addition to a few of Karen's other comments. So there was a comment about not getting reports that we used to provide monthly. There was a monthly capital report that was provided just to the county administration. And, and some members of the public like to see that. The reason that we stopped doing that and that we are changing how we report that is because that monthly report, it really didn't provide a lot of value. It was very labor intensive and it was always about two or three months behind. So we do still do quarterly consent decree reporting, annual consent decree reporting. And in addition, we meet with the county team weekly, if not more frequently. And we provide many reports, including monthly, of our capital progress. So I, I'm not, I understand that there is a change in reporting and we are working on. And we are working on putting together some kind of monthly full report. And perhaps that's what Ryan wants to share. But there isn't a lack of reporting. And, and then one other thing, just kind of on the collaboration, the last several months. I do know that we've received questions. I am not aware of any questions that we have not answered. And in fact, we received questions from the county team on Sunday and Monday of this week and turned them around, I think by Tuesday at noon. So we've been trying to give you everything we possibly can to support this budget. MSD's budget always comes at this time of year. We provide it in August so that we aren't waiting until the last minute. And that's why we've been, you know, we've been working and having those frequent meetings to hopefully not be in a position where you have questions that haven't been answered. So I do want to let Ryan just speak quickly.
Before he comes, you did make a change on it because I got some late emails saying that this wasn't right. If you changed, you made, you did acknowledge that it's not the same budget in August that we got today.
Before we posted for public comment, we did revise it. We did not revise the operating budget request. That remains the same as what we shared, where we requested in August. The revisions to the capital budget request, again, for the 2022 year, which is the only year that there's any funding. We've only reduced the budget. And all of those things have been, over the course of several months, discussed in meetings and we've provided a fair amount of responses to questions and additional data. So.
And you did also say, we had asked more than one time about having that on your water bill. You said that was a consent decree, but you put it upon yourself to do it a different way. So just, it's those kinds of things because we, we get these calls and we're like, and we're thinking it got done. And then you come up and say, well, now we doing it some different kind of way. People aren't opening junk mail. They opening up the bills. If you get a bill, you gonna open it up. If you get some junk mail, you throwing it, recycling it. So, you know, we're walking away telling people that it's been done, we thought. And then you're saying, well, now I decided to do it a little different. So it's just those kinds of things. I, like I said, I'm, I'm new to the board, but certainly not new to, when we say we going to do something, we going to do it. So not, not, not to, these are just things I heard today. You know what I'm saying? And you're right, we do need a whole time to dedicate to you. And we can't dedicate it to you right this second because we in the middle of another budget. So, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to add real quick, not to belabor the point or extend the, the meeting at all. But I, I think it's really important that commissioners, that you hear this and that everyone in this room and everyone who might be listening here. We provide a plethora of reports on a monthly basis. We meet with the county team on a weekly basis or meeting scheduled twice a week with county monitor team, with Joe Graff, with the county team. We provide every piece of information that is asked for, that is always provided. We are working on replacing the EMAR report that, as Diana referenced, with something that will be real time. I mean, that's, and that will be available publicly available information on the website. You want to check a project status. That's something that's been in the work. We've been working on it together with the county team, working closely with Joe Graff. We can provide an update on that in a future meeting and where that stands. But I just wanted to make that clear because it sounded like what people were hearing is that there's no reporting or information lacking. And with Ms. Wall in particular, she receives a lot of custom reports that she has asked for through public records requests. And we can provide that information too, to let you know what specifically she's heard. Finally, on our capital program, a lot of the things, so traditionally we provide a draft budget in August. MSD's done that for every, every year forever, as far as I know. And then their changes refined through the, until the end of the year for the final budget. This year, we're working together, we're meeting weekly every Friday with county team, working on the consent decree with a joint, jointly, a consensus plan. So a lot of the changes and a lot of the things that, you know, people, members of the public asking for information. I mean, there are some things about this that, you know, everything that we can share is, is here. If there are any specific questions about the projects that are in there, consent decree, what's happening? We can, we can talk about that. But there may be some cases where we would need to request an executive session to talk about some aspects of the negotiations, which are under joint defense privilege. That's it. Thank you.
Ryan, not quite. But my concern is the Sierra Club and Ms. Wall. And she was saying reports that she normally would get. And I heard you say she fills out a public records request. And I'm just wondering, since it's public knowledge, is that something, is there a reason why she has to do that? And you can't continue the process of just sending her information?
No, we want to make everything available so that everyone has it and can understand it. There's nothing to hide. And I will credit Ms. Wall with, you know, something that came out of a discussion at one of the board meetings. I think in September, you know, the number of projects in planning and design and construction, what are the, the status? And that came through as a public records request. And we realized, you know, that would be a really useful report for us to produce on a regular basis. So we delivered the information to Ms. Wall and we, we plan on producing that specific report. You know, it's, it's just another way of looking at the information that we've had and is available. But, you know, so it's not a negative thing necessarily. Everyone has good ideas and we can, you know, build on things and make it better.
Absolutely. Karen, did you want to make some comments?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will only speak to the, the impervious surface fee rate structure. Back in 2015, there was a, a task force that was formed called the Rate Affordability Task Force. And, and it was, it was a county led effort. Was folks on that task force were chamber seniors, helper seniors, Sierra Club, COFA. We had a wide range of, of customers. Legal aid was part of it. And the Rate Affordability Task Force produced a report in May of 2015, I think it was. It might've been 16. All, I believe, seven of the rate recommendations that came from that task force have been implemented except for this remaining impervious surface fee recommendation. And so that's what MSD is actually analyzing right now as part of the follow up for the Rate Affordability Task Force work.
So why are we seeing there are no new revenues that would come out of that? I thought that was the purpose of establishing.
What's going to happen? So, so it is rate neutral. As, as we start, you will find though, that because the metered charges that will be a portion of what gets bifurcated out. The metered portion is what people actually use in their houses or in their buildings. It actually gets metered to run through that. That will be one charge. And then based on the impervious surface of that lot or the property itself, a, a calculation will be made on what is being contributed to our MSD system on rain events. So impervious surface only gets water driving to us during rain events. That will help us to try to make sure that we're equitably collecting fees from people who are contributing to the system. So you have your parking lots that don't have a restroom facility on it or any plumbing. They will be new customers for, under this circumstance. So to say that there's, you know, no new revenue, that would be one of the examples of where there would be some new revenue.
Right, because it's a fee.
But the, the residential property owner who has the smaller lot would have, would contribute less. And, and really what we've seen so far is that there would be some significant relief for the residential customers with the smaller lots.
Can I interject just related to that? The whole purpose was to try to create a fair system for people paying these rates. Because there are some folks that are, there's a lot of water dumping into the system that we have to treat and others not so much. And so we're trying to create a balance where the people that are not contributing to all this stormwater going into the system don't pay as much as those that are. So they're in the Rate Affordability Task Force. There were recommendations like a monthly billing instead of every three months, which helps people budget and it makes it more affordable. All of these things were to help rate payers with affordability issues.
And we will be presenting as, at the same time, components of an incentive program for people to make, to mitigate against any increases in the impervious surface fees by, by taking actions on their own properties to, to reduce that imperviousness.
So it'll help rate payers. It may hurt like commercial, like church lots, grocery store lots, things like that. So somebody.
There's a lot to it and that's really why we have to take some time to, you know, it, you all want to make sure that we're trying to look at ways to also, best we can, deal with the overland flow. And all of that comes into play when you're, when you're talking about this.
And lastly, Karen, I didn't know we had deferred the impervious fee structure presentation till January.
That was just practically speaking, I, I, I sent a message out because the stakeholder group had been notified that we were going to be in front of the board on the 30th. There was no date set, just it's holiday season. I said likely the first quarter of next year.
Okay, so we'll just go on and wait because I know we were pushing them. Because they were a little slow. And so now they've gotten it ready and we had, because of executive sessions had to cancel it. Okay, so we'll do it early January, that's for sure.
Madam President, if I could, just a couple of quick items for Diana and Ryan. I don't want to belabor the, the meeting, but just a few things that if we could get some clarity around, and I'm just going to rattle these off and I can follow them up with a, with an email or something. But the first is, just as I was looking over the information, wanted to get a better understanding of the historic spend level on asset management versus what's being proposed in the budget. Wanted to get some clarification around or reconciliation between, on the personnel side, the, the current headcount, the projected headcount and the vacancy rate that's being proposed. Because what I read in the, in the materials is a little bit different than what I heard in the presentation, which I think started to explain some of it, but I just wanted to make sure I'm getting that right. On the non-personnel side, I know that there's been some analysis from Black and Beach on assumptions related to some of the non-personnel increases. And just wanted to see how that reconciles with the increases that we're showing on the non-personnel side here. And then finally, on the debt service side, I know we, we're showing a small uptick in debt service and some of that may be related to some of the OWDA projects. But also just wanted to see whether there was a new money issuance that was reflected in there. And just so we could talk about that. And I can follow up with the, with the written correspondence to you on it. But I was just hoping by next time we could have some answers on some of those things as well.
Yeah, we can get that.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I had some comments on the presentation. I haven't made mine yet. As it relates to personnel, you said some were retiring. So what percentage of your staff would you say are retired? And also are the executive level staff?
Madam President, I would have to get your report on that. I was referring to, we had a fair amount of retirements a little over a year ago when the city initiated the early retirement incentive program. So those really all, most of those people retired by the end of 2020. And so this year, we've been trying to fill a lot of those vacancies. If I can get you a report on the.
Were those high level physicians?
They were across the board.
Okay, because I'm just thinking if they were high level, then you can kind of reduce the cost of the new people that are coming in. But, okay, and one other thing as it relates to capital outlay. Let me see, what did I have down? Well, I know when you guys come in normally, I don't know if you can just give me a report, another report of, you know, when we approved the budget, we approved it for this certain amount that's on here. But in between that process, in between that time, I can remember you guys coming in two or three times during the year about this project was more than we thought and we need to allocate more monies and things like that. And, and just when you had to come back to ask for more money after the approval. And, because I know there's always change orders and we didn't know it was going to, you know, when we got down there, we didn't know the pipes were, you know, whatever. So I'd like to know how many times you had to come back. Because I'm really leaning toward a reduction of what you're asking as it relates to the operating and the capital budget, because we always go over what we approve. And so I'm just, I understand your validation of why you think you need the increase. And we know inflation, equipment and all that kind of stuff. But I'd just like to know when you, how many times you've come back for more money. And I can remember Ryan, the last time you were here, he's smiling, but I'm curious. I don't know if you want to smell. But I remember Ryan saying really distinctly that, that projects are on track. Yeah, and so it was really good when you said you wanted to see what the projects look like and where we are with it. Because I can remember and he's agreeing, so what the discrepancy is. And so maybe there is none, but I'd like to also see that too.
So on, on the capital projects, I just wanted to clarify. So when the budget is approved in, you know, the annual CIP budget, there is no funding appropriated for those capital projects. So those, we come to you throughout the year with those construction funding requests. If there are change orders, oftentimes those are covered with our, we have a program contingency that is funded at the beginning of the year. And this year, we did not have to come ask for any more overarching program contingency funding. We were able to cover all of the, all of those increases. So, so that, so that's good news. And I think on the operating budget, I think you were maybe getting at the fact that, you know, we obviously have to track our operating budget and we do quarterly reports. I will say that we have been a little bit behind on those this year. We, we lost a staff member who was leading that. And so that, that's, you know, it's just been a little bit behind. And we do provide that, we just sent the third quarter report very recently. So those just show you that we're on track or not with our operating budget. And we would have to come back to the board for an adjustment or an additional appropriation, which we did not need to do either. But in terms of the, you know, the tracking and the quarterly reporting, that is typically done. And by request, we'd be happy to come and present that. Otherwise, we're just sharing it with the administration. So.
All right, well, thank you. I don't have anything else. I think we've discussed a lot of stuff and asked for a lot of stuff. So thank you guys for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Is everybody good? Do you need any? Can we take a short break? She needs to leave. Close the hearing. No, I thought we had another hearing coming forward though, next week for MSD or not?
We do have a separate hearing.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close this hearing. Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas, Commissioner Reese, Commissioner Dreehouse. Yes, thank you. We will be right back. Stay tuned.
Yes, thank you. We will be right back. Stay tuned.
But we took a short break. We're going to move forward to our regular agenda. Our engineer, Mr. Eric Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just a few items here today, pretty quick and easy. Um item number one is a modification to a resolution for a twenty twenty municipal road fund project for the village of North Bend. They were originally approved by the board on July sixteenth, twenty twenty. Um, they have since, that was originally set aside for Harrison Avenue. They've done some engineering, and they've decided to do Miami Avenue instead, which uh the the change is compatible with the MRF program and the guidelines and intentions. So um we're recommending that the uh project be changed from Harrison Avenue to Miami Avenue for the village of North Bend. The amount of fifty thousand dollars from municipal permissive auto tax fund.
Thank you. Any discussion? Karen, I'd make a motion to approve item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, item number two is a resolution to set the public hearing dates for the sidewalk repair program for the county. This year, the uh the county roads will be in Delhi, Green and Whitewater Townships. We we are looking to set the public hearing dates of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two for the first hearing and February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two for the second hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Um, any discussion? Karen, I make a motion to adopt item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, items three, four, and five are all um annual resolutions we do to uh perform operations of the engineer's office. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the county engineer to act in accordance with Attorney General Opinion eighty-two dash double oh six to provide amenities for the calendar year twenty twenty-two. This would be to uh provide amenities for the annual township meeting that will be held in February.
You want to go in through four?
You want me to do four also?
Uh huh.
Okay, sure. And um item four is the resolution author directing the county engineer to conduct the annual meeting of county and township authorities and approving payment of necessary expenses for the same pursuant to the ORC, not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Make a motion to adopt items three and four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehan.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, item number five is a resolution authorizing the county engineer during the year of twenty twenty-two to employ labor, purchase materials, and proceed by force account in the maintenance, repair, construction, and reconstruction of roads, bridges, and culverts in Hamilton County. This allows the county engineers to use their forces within force account limits to repair our infrastructure.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Is there, I I like to make a motion to adopt item five.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehan.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, item number six is a resolution placing load limits on West Fork Road Bridge, Kemper Road Bridge, East Fork Avenue Bridge, the Western Hills Viaduct, and Kemper Road Bridge for specialized hauling vehicles and emergency vehicles. We annually do uh evaluations of all the bridges, and we run calculations. The state and the federal government have changed those in the last couple of years, so we have reevaluated all of our structures. And these uh five structures require a a load limit for specialized hauling vehicles and emergency vehicles.
Okay. So you're placing low limits. They never had them, or you re?
That is correct. These did not have load limits prior.
Any discussion? I'd like to make a motion to adopt item six.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven is a uh resolution setting a date for a hearing for the proposed name change of Hunterston Court to Hunterston Hunters Run Lane and directing advertisement as the same under the ORC. The Sims Township has uh put, sent us a request to change the name of the street, the subdivision street in the township, and this is the uh part of the process to set up the hearing.
Is there a reason for that? I mean, is there additional?
The residents, it's, there's only about ten residents on that street, and it's they, their address and everything they have says Hunterston Lane, but the official name that the auditor has is Hunterston.
Oh.
Hunters Run Court, so they want to change it to Court to Lane, so all documents match up.
Sure. Uh, any more discussion? I'd like to make a motion to adopt item seven.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. Okay, our next item, MSD.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Lauren DiGarcia with MSD. I still have Ryan Welsh and Matt Spadari here from Waste Water Engineering, also with MSD, to uh try and answer any questions that the board may have.
Mm hmm.
We only have one item on the board's regular agenda today, and it is for construction funding for CSO's four oh two through four oh six wet weather improvements project. Uh, this project is located in the city of Cincinnati's Sailor Park neighborhood, and the request is before the board today to authorize and appropriate eighteen million, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the construction of this project. The board approved design funding for this project through the twenty eighteen CIP, and it was also included in the twenty twenty-one CIP for construction. And the board recently approved the appropriation of necessary easements for this project just on November eighteenth. So if you feel that you're having a bit of deja vu as I talk about this project, it's because I just spoke about it a couple of weeks ago. So it is a consent decree project included in MSD's Wet Weather Improvement Plan, or WIP, and specifically the bridge schedule between phase one and future consent decree phases as negotiated with US EPA, Ohio EPA, and Arsenco. This project is a combination of what were originally designated as five separate WIP projects, and they were combined into one large project. This project will provide improvements to combine sewer overflow structures four oh two through four oh six to achieve high-water, dry weather protection and floatable controls in accordance with US EPA's Combined Sewer Overflow's guidance for nine minimum controls. Various improvements will be made to the new CSO structures to improve performance, reduce river water from entering into the sewer system, and work toward achieving the consent decree required allowable remaining overflow volume. All CSOs will be installed at higher elevations, and CSO's four oh two through four oh five will be repositioned on the north side of River Road. The higher elevations will decrease the reliance on mechanical high-water, dry weather protection, and will allow for replacement of the interceptor at a shallower depth. And in addition, uh, the relocation will allow for future stormwater separation in the Sailor Park neighborhood. The amount requested is approximately four point three million dollars more than the amount included in the twenty twenty-one CIP for construction. This is due to the design engineer's opinion of probable construction cost or OPCC uh increase basis, excuse me, increases based on material cost increases such as ductile iron pipe, um which has increased by forty percent, labor rate increases, construction equipment rate increases, and additional ten percent bid market adjustment as required by the new MSD project costing manual, and uh the updated project cost escalation factor based on the current project schedule. Um with that, MSD recommends and requests approval.
Thank you, and um it goes back to what I was saying about the 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 project always comes in more, the four point three million uh more than what we expected. And uh at some point, and I've said this before, there needs to be a limit of how much more we're willing to pay um and and to try to work within those parameters. Um, and in addition, I'm going to be a little picky, I guess. I'm looking at, it says um authorizing the city manager to advertise bids, and it has eighteen millions. It really looks like we're paying eighteen million to advertise bids. I'm wondering, do we need to add on advertised bids and for construction of the project? Um, because it is a little misleading. Not nothing, I mean, I'm just bringing it up for commission to take a look at it. What do you think, Mike? Freeman, Mr. Freeman? Yeah, if 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 the board wants to add that on to um what it says, authorizing the city manager to advertise bids at eighteen million dollars.
So.
It's nothing in there about the the construction.
I was just. Um, that specific resolution is, as you said, are authorizing the city manager to advertise for bids, and that is a competitive process. Um although we have that estimate, obviously, we need to know how much to come here and request from the board for funding. I mean, the actual amount will depend on the bids we get in. Sometimes they're lower, sometimes they're higher.
Well, my point is that it's not eighteen million for advertising for bids. So if the board is good with it, I'm good with it, but I think it needs to be more explicit or.
Madam President.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, the the listing of the numerical value is just a is a is a creature of our agenda system. It's it's not um, that's something we began adding uh recently, just so the public could see what the dollar value was.
Mm hmm.
So we can reflect in the in the minutes, if if you'd like, some where it says project value, eighteen point one million or something like that.
That would be great.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I see what you're talking about. It's the wording of the agenda. I apologize, I speak to the resolution.
That's okay. Thank you for your presentation. I'll open up any other discussion. Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I do. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, so the the final total will be twenty million, seven hundred eighty thousand. Is that correct or?
Correct. That's um, I think this uh question came up at the board's last meeting where MSD had items on the agenda. We do include a budget um spreadsheet in our fact sheet, and it shows how that total project cost is calculated. And in this case, it is um the roughly two point five million dollars that was already approved by the board for design and and things like that.
Right.
Um, in addition to the eighteen point three that we are requesting today for construction.
Yeah, but the bid that you're going to advertise, is it twenty million or eighteen million?
Well, um, we can't predict what the the bids will be from the contractors, but our estimate for the construction cost of what these bids will come at around is eighteen point three.
Got you. Uh, my other question is, and I asked this before, certainly, I know we're working on a CROSE study, and I'm still trying to really understand MSD because, you know, one minute they're over here, one minute you're at the city. City does have uh inclusion. Um, and so is that what you go by, or do you go by the county that does not have inclusion? Because this, you know, when I'm looking at these things, eighteen million, you got some big projects coming in. And uh I know that our board has been very um deliberate in uh about making sure that there is inclusion. We don't want, you know, we get money from rate payers, and they, you know, you don't get a discount because of your, you know, re- re erase. You have to participate. So we want participation uh from everyone. So is that, are you part of us? Are you part of the city? If you're part of the city, then there should be inclusion. If you're with us, then where do we go from here? I don't know. Uh, maybe the administrator can speak better to that.
Lauren, I don't know if you were planning to address it, um but it, so the uh MSD from a procurement perspective follows county procurement rules. So um I know they have an SBE program within MSD. I know they track um MBE, WBE, inclusion numbers, that type of thing. But if you recall, at the beginning of the year, uh, we had reached out uh to MSD, and MSD had agreed to join into uh our disparity study that we were conducting. So that that process will cover MSD as well. Um and ultimately, we can put, we'll be able to put strategies uh into place that will cover the procurements of MSD also.
And when you put this out, do you go with, go to Robert Bell to help get it out in our inclusion office? I'm just trying to.
Um, we have an MSD SBE program and individuals there that are um looking at these and evaluating for percentages of inclusion and things like that to put in the bid.
But you're.
The bid package.
Right, so but you're, if you're procurement under the county, do you work with our person that's, I guess, we have holding equity?
I know, I know that Robert works very closely with the with the SBE inclusion folks over at MSD, yes.
Yes, it is our purchasing department um in the city of Cincinnati that actually advertises the bids. But we are, as the administrator said, we are following county procurement law.
Well, I want to be on record and get a clear understanding, because it seems like when it comes to, it's like when I talk about this Africa that we with the county when it's no inclusion, we're not with the county, you know, over here. Now, the city is the procurement. Now, the city has inclusion. They have a whole office. So you're saying when it's time to be included, you with us, but it's time to advertise, you with the city. So I'm just trying to get a I just want to make sure they're working with Robert Bell and the inclusion office.
The MSD actually has a set of SBE rules and regulations which are negotiated between the city and county several years ago, and that sets the framework for how projects are advertising bid. They follow county law in terms of what they can and cannot do. You're correct. The city does have certain um programs that they can initiate. The county currently does not. Therefore, we must follow the county law, but when it comes to advertising for bids and thresholds for all of that, it follows a preset procedure within the uh SBE, a pre um kind of procedure that we were doing. The city administered that, that individual purchasing department at the city, but they know that when it comes to projects, there are separate set of rules and procedures that they must follow that are laid out. And I'm sure we can get you, MSD, if you have to provide copies of that, uh, for that.
Sure, we can do that.
Yeah, I just want to, because, you know, I'm I'm here, I'm looking for new ways, because it's new days.
Right.
Uh, if we negotiated something that's not legally binding, is it, can that negotiation be open again? You said the city and the county came to an agreement, or is that something we got to do because we're in the court? Did I make a, did I make?
No, you're fine. In terms of the law that we follow, this is a program that we are allowed to do under the law, and we do it. So there isn't anything that legally binding or not. We could agree that we aren't going to follow it. I think if the number is that following that, I think both sides do it.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about the SBE following it. I'm talking about going a step further and making sure. You're saying that we negotiated just a small business program, and the results, I haven't seen a lot of inclusion. I'm saying, can we now renegotiate an inclusion program, or is that against the law? I know a while back, SBE was a big deal back in the day, just getting regular SBE. But now we had a new day of e- everybody's hollering equity, inclusion, no taxation without participation. Could we renegotiate or tweak it to have inclusion, or you saying we can't legally? I guess that's what I'm trying to.
We can, we can follow up on that, Commissioner. I, my, my intuition is that, is that as they follow county procurement law, that they are bound by the procurement abilities and capabilities of the county, which would include small business, but not going that, that step further without the CROSSO study, which we are, we have wrapped them into. So, but we can go back and take a look and confirm that one way or the other.
Gotcha. I got you. Thank you. I just figured if we're gonna, if you're gonna follow our law, then our procurement people should be leading it. But we can look at that at a later date. So thank you for the explanation. Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve item eight.
Yes. I mean, second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yeah.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreenhough.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. We have stormwater. Sir.
Give me back again.
Yes.
There are two, two items here for the Stormwater District. The first one is a resolution approving the Hamilton County Stormwater District Third Renewal Agreement with the Hamilton County General Health District for performance of stormwater services for 2022. This is in the amount of $444,565.
And where does the money come from?
Money comes from the Stormwater District.
Okay. Any questions? I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve item nine.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreenhough.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 10 is a resolution approving the Hamilton County Stormwater District Second Renewal Agreement with the Hamilton County Soil and Water Conservation District for Performance of Stormwater Services for 2022. This is in the amount of $450,572. Again, this money comes from the Stormwater District.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? I make a motion to approve item 10.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreenhough.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. You have before you some consent agenda items, items 11 through 37. Any comments or questions, Vice President Reese? Yes, thank you, President. Item number 17 with the amount $67,984,859.15 calls for a number of adjustments that are bundled in this. And I just wanted to see if the administrator could, particularly the ones dealing with the stadium adjustments. I know it was, he explained it to me, and I appreciate that. But I just, for those who might be watching at home, they see stadium budgets for a pilot and sales tax refinancing. Maybe just highlight what that is and why, and also the land bank appropriation is also in here.
Yes, Madam President, Madam Vice President, thank you. Yes, so as you said, there is, this is a budget adjustment related to 67 million. So it looks like a really big budget adjustment. The vast majority of it is wrapped, is explained by some really accounting issues. So 58 million of this relates to the appropriation for reporting the accounting entries for the sales tax debt refinancing, refinancing that we had done. So that's a huge portion of it. 4.2 million of it relates to the, the split down on the, we just talked a little bit about the PTR earlier, and a couple of weeks ago, we had done a presentation on it. We had talked about the various various items that are paid out of the Riverfront Sales Tax Fund. So one of those things is the pilot payment, the CPS schools. And that pilot payment relates to the two stadiums, Paul Brown Stadium and Great American Ballpark. And they each have a pro-rata portion of that pilot. And over time, we've noticed that that adjustment is off a little bit. So this just really, from an accounting perspective, reconciles the amount that GABP is paying versus the amount that PBS is paying. This is actually an increase to the amount of the pilot that is associated with Great American Ballpark versus Paul Brown Stadium. So it's really just an internal shift of where those dollars are coming from.
Thank you. And Madam President, and I know we had discussed this, the item of the land bank, there's an increase in property tax fee collections. And so in here also is over half a million dollars, $515,980.65. One of the things I wanted to ask for, since we are a pass-through funder, we have a choice. We can pass it through or we can let it sit there. So that will make us a funder. I have asked that I'd like to get a copy since we are funders. I'd like to get a copy of the contract of what we pay the port authority to run the land bank. We got the other ones, but this one, and I would think, considering we're a funder, we should be able to get that without having to go to the land bank meeting. That should be hopefully public record and people could see that. But I would like to get a copy. I don't know if the other commissioners may already have, have seen it. But if they haven't, if that could be also distributed as well. So.
We can certainly provide that. It's a, it should be an agreement between the Land Use Reutilization Corporation and the port. But we, I believe, have copies of that. So we can, we can get that to all three members to the degree you don't have it.
Thank you. And thank you, Madam President.
That's it.
Thank you. And in addition, we have about 10 items, 10 resolutions as it relates to JFS and placement of our children and other services that are being given to them and other parts of JFS that they work with. So that's good to see that we're continuing those services. Any comments, Commissioner?
No comments.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve items 11 through 37.
Second. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreenhough.
Yes.
Okay. You've done some good work today, ladies. I will open it up. If there are any final comments, Vice President Reese. Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind everyone, I know I did it at the beginning, but also we just wish Wynton Woods luck tonight. And, you know, Cincinnati and Hamilton County, we're doing pretty good with the sports. So we, you know, I don't know, we got a lot of bragging rights. So certainly want to wish them the best this evening. So that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner Dreenhough. Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreenhough.
Yes.
Thank you.